Have it during a holiday event of sorts, but now they're preparing their catering sandwiches.
Smart.
You're right.
So you're buying this lunch dinner?
Well, you go check in superintendent suite there. I think there's some stuff.
And one more.
Yep, that was good.
We just did some different.
Sounds good.
All right, we're going to call to order the RIM PM School Board Workshop February 20th, 2024. Let's please rise for a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early light? What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose bright stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight? O'er the grand hearts we watched were so gallant we streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the ever-sweet glare, proved through the night that our flag was still there? Oh, say, doth that star-spangled banner yet wave? O'er the land of the free? And the home of the brave?
Please be seated. Okay, roll call, please.
Char Mossero, Colin Conklin present.
Sally Hunt.
Chris Keachell.
Will Curry.
Will Shacklemore.
So we'll move on to any special announcements. Board liaison updates.
If you want to go, Colin, I'll come back.
I actually don't. I don't have an update at this time. Legislature is winding down. It's actually been super quiet, which is making everybody a little nervous. So we're watching it, but truly the focus has been on deregulation this whole session. And we'll probably learn more. I think there's a little bit of a, well, there's a difference between the House and the Senate. They're ironing those things out, but for the most part, it's been really super quiet and a lot of the committees have, they're done. So, you know, it'll be interesting to watch.
You want me to go or wait?
If you're ready.
Yeah. Okay. Okay. Flight detective followed chat day meeting. They elected new officers. Joe Wright is new, is a new board member, so that's good. Group approved the FTC mission vision and strategic plan. FTC team is closely monitoring all potential grants to possibly increase the budget line. Thanks to the Ed Foundation, the kitchen at the A1A Center has been cleaned and approved by Department of Health. We're glad to hear that. A new bulldozer for heavy equipment class has been approved and is expected to be delivered very soon. And the Wood of Safe Program at Felter Swim and Racquet Club is set for April 27. Virtual Teen Town Hall, the last event was held on Wednesday, January 31st. The topic was internet use and social media. Once again, a wonderful conversation was stimulated by students and our experts, the suggestions on how to improve student safety. Our last annual event is set for Wednesday, February 28th at 7:30. The topic is mental wellness and the value of resiliency. Participating students receive five community hours. Any student interested in attending should contact either one of the two student board liaisons or myself. George Washington Carver Advisory Board met. The first part of the meeting was used to review the ILA. We discussed necessary procedures that will be developed for rentals to ensure some kind of income for the Carver Center. The county will vote on the revised document at the meeting on March 4th. Special thanks to the county for renovating two old bathrooms. Room room one room is now for storage and the second will be a small room with a refrigerator, counters, cabinets, and a microwave. And that's long been needed in that facility because they have a lot of events that has food, so that's a plus. The Governance Board bylaws need to be revised to meet the new ILA. Plus, the meeting agenda will need a place for PAL to report on their activities because now PAL is sitting as part of the governance. It's not even the Governance Board, now it's the Carver Advisory Board. Ms. Robinson reported all recent activities, including the grand opening of the New Wing and the MLK Parade, which many of us were involved in. And then finally, Mrs. Success reported they have now graduated 357 students.
Wow.
With 24 students currently enrolled, that's huge.
Yeah, that is.
There are 357 students that dropped out of school or out of school for some reason that will get diplomas, so that's huge.
Very.
And PAL received $100,000 grant from the Hammock Dunes Care Group to build and improve a facility. Since they're not building a facility, they're going to improve the Carver Center with that $100,000. So it's wonderful. All proceeds will be used at the Carver Center. They're doing floor reconditioning and line painting, new lights, new wall paint, and wall mats are just a few items that are already in progress to improve the gym. Finally, PAL is also working with Housing Authority to recruit participants for free general membership, plus offering financial assistance for any housing authority youth wishing to participate in PAL programs. So they will have scholarships available for them. And this is actually finally Motown Mandus fundraiser, which is their annual fundraiser, is set for March 23rd. March your calendars now and plan to attend this wonderful fundraiser and be prepared to participate in the fabulous cake auction, which Ms. Conklin can tell you stories about that. She's not allowed to carry any cakes, but she dropped one once.
I bought it, though.
And so she's throwing around and boom. The good news was we had an exact backup for that particular cake.
We did.
Very good.
That's it.
Does anybody else have any updates?
I've just got a couple of things from Rimfire. I think I've mentioned in a previous update about their expansion of Classroom to Careers. That's kicked off in October. There's another session that's going to be happening March 4th. There's a lot of enthusiasm amongst faculty on that program, so that's awesome. Just a couple of events, Night at the Museum, where classes showcase a project or student work for families. Is this, what is the 22nd? Maybe Friday? Anyway, February 22nd, 5:30 to 7:00 is Night at the Museum. And then PBIS Night, which is Positive Behavior Interventions and Supports, is March 7th also. It starts at 5:30 to 7:30. It is, a dinner is going to be provided to families where they can learn about the importance of resiliency, participate in family games, and create individualized schedules to help families manage morning, evening, and homework routines. That's, that's really an important one. So anybody in the room or anybody watching, March 7th, 5:30 to 7:30 is a great support event for Rimfire families. Anyway, that's all I got.
Both Thursday's. They're both Thursday's.
Thank you.
Yeah, I got to visit Wadsworth, I think it was last week, for their glow lunches, which was a celebration for students that did well on fast testing and IREDDY. It was a fun little event where they got to eat lunch in the dark, but it was glow in the dark. It was cool.
Hopefully, the food was not glowing.
No. I'm just thankful Principal Newman felt for inviting me. Anytime I have a day off, it's always nice to go visit. And for school health advisory, that was actually happening during our last school board meeting. But just some updates, the Department of Health, there's been an increase in RSV, mostly pediatrics and seniors, and I can kind of attest to that myself. A lot of respiratory viruses, but they're not all flu and COVID, so a lot of times it's basically RSV. We have health screenings going on now, finished at BTMS and ITMS. We have updated our protocol for attendance and truancy and for health education. Reproductive health has changed. Now we have to, they have moved puberty lessons from fourth to fifth grade. Also Narcan, 80% of the district has been trained. That is my updates today.
Good.
Wonderful. Thank you for all those. I just have a few, several liaison, there was not a lot to report back in these February meetings. But we did have the Ed Foundation 20th Annual Mardi Gras Celebration, which was a fundraiser and was very successful and just grateful for the Ed Foundation's continued efforts to raise money for education in our community and all the donors that support them as well.
That's good.
It was a great turnout and also they have an upcoming, on April 8th, the Joe Rizzo Golf Tournament benefiting Classroom to Careers. That'd be another great event to participate in. Also, the, not a lot to report back from the auditorium, other than they have some great shows coming up here. And they have been making an effort to honor veterans when they have available seats to give them complimentary tickets. And I thought that was really wonderful. I even heard that promoted out on the radio and on WNSF. So that was, I think that's a great way to honor our veterans. Also, although not necessarily my liaison appointment, but I did have an opportunity to visit the campus of FTC and was given a great tour by Mr. McDermott and just a great facility there, lots of great things happening. Got to kind of see where, if we're able to get the funding for our special project, where that addition might go. But met a lot of the staff there, very dedicated and determined folks there that are on that team. So that was a real treat to be part of that. So, Secretary Pennington, do you have anything? All right, so any changes to the agenda?
No.
Okay, then we'll move on to public comment. Do we have anybody signed up for public comment today? Would anybody like to make a public comment that has not signed up? If not, seeing no one approach, we'll move on from public comment. And we're going to move to our number seven, Human Resource Services. We're going to do 7.01 Healthcare Center Recommendations, Mr. Bobalet.
And we have a team that's coming for, I want to just kind of give us some historical information. Remembering that a few months ago, we went out for an RFP around clinic services. This presentation is the company that the committee reviewed all of the RFPs and this was the company that was recommended. Today's presentation, this one at 701, as well as 702, is a lot of information. It's going to be a lot of information around the clinic services, a lot of information around our premium. And so it is our anticipation as a staff and as the district that you're going to receive the information, likely give us some information that you may want some additional information on. We will be coming back to you again in two weeks to answer any additional questions that you may have. We will also be giving to you in two weeks at our next board meeting, a financial update because remembering that this, our premiums, our clinic, all of those things are just one piece of our whole entire financial position. And so we just want to gauge what the purpose of today's meeting is. We have also asked that our staff, and we will follow back up with our staff as well, that they go back and watch this session. So we are going to be providing you with a lot of information so that our staff also knows what to anticipate and know where they can go for any questions that they may have related to the clinic or related to the premiums. All right?
So just to kind of back up in time a little bit, we got to a point where the contract with Clinic Services for IREDDY Health had expired and the insurance committee sought out an RFP for both an inside and outside bids for healthcare services, clinic services. There was an RFP committee, then we had vendors present to the RFP community, both on the inside and on the outside clinic spaces. The RFP committee selected Everside's bid for basically an inside clinic. And at that time, we began the process of discussing where we are in the journey for a healthcare center. And this presentation is a lot of that discussion as far as laying additional groundwork. We were fortunate enough to have Shannon Mason here from Everside to go ahead and share what the clinic bid, RFP, has entails based on our discussions and our reworking. And we're looking forward to kind of sharing that information with you. We are also pleased to have Danielle Boyle with us, who's kind of walked us all through the process with Brown and Brown. And, you know, we're all here to kind of answer questions, both as far as factual pieces, data pieces, and process questions. And at this point, I'm going to kind of turn it over to Shannon to share a little bit about Everside.
All right. Well, thank you, and it's such a pleasure to get to present to you all today. The first thing I love to notice is you probably see a logo difference on here where it says Everside Health and Marathon Health. So in the timeframe that we actually completed our RFP for you, your request for proposal to evaluate a health center, we've actually merged organizations and come together. And that's providing quite a bit of growth and opportunities here. And we're both very well-known in Florida as well as throughout the United States. And I've got a couple of slides that just sort of blend through what some of the value proposition is of our merged organization now, Everside Health with Marathon Health. So if you want to, we can switch to the next slide here. Not sure who's driving. Oh, okay.
It might even be helpful for you all to know Marathon was ranked second in this process, so it was really a
Oh, interesting.
It was a tight decision with Shannon's team winning for their oral presentation. They did a fantastic job and brought in the clinical team, but it was funny how it was first and second.
That's interesting. Well, and it's such a pleasure because if there were some individuals on the Marathon team, they're now going to be on my team anyway. And so we're going to, we're going to be bringing the best of everyone together to represent you as an organization. But I love to bring people back a little bit to why did, why did you challenge your committee to even evaluate this? And what is it we're trying to accomplish? And so I thought I'd start out a little bit with, you're not unusual in the sense that you're exploring this opportunity. Quite a few schools in Florida and in the nation have chosen this as a method to reduce their healthcare expenses. And employers just generally, this survey data really explains a lot that employers recognize that what they're trying to do is, you know, attract, retain your top talent, those teachers and other staff members that are affecting your students and your districts here, but they're also trying to mitigate and lower healthcare expenses either now or into the future. And so that, those two blended opportunities are what we're going to tackle by moving forward with the health center. One thing that this survey didn't even show you is there were underlying results of it that the employees and staff members even answered as part of this national survey. And 80, I found it fascinating, 80% of the employees stated that their healthcare benefits were their number one priority minus their salaries and income. And so this oftentimes becomes the most sought-after benefit that you would ever offer your, your staff members in addition to their salary. So again, next slide, if we're talking about, you know, what is it we're going to accomplish, what are we going to tackle as part of this process? Is we're going to try to tackle some things that are preventable costs. We know that there will be, you know, costs arising, lots of medical improvements and technology happening every day, new drugs coming to the market. There are certain things that we can't really get our arms around, but the things that we could help in the health center to prevent are getting more individuals using healthcare that maybe haven't been using it right now, as well as, you know, looking into the health coaching aspects, the population health aspects, tackling some chronic conditions and coaching, doing things of that nature. You know, maybe some individuals don't even know what their baselines are for getting a lab. And maybe there's been some hurdles or some reason why they haven't been using the healthcare available already to them to the best to prevent future high claimants. And that's what we're going to try and tackle. We know you've got a robust health plan here and you've got an extensive network of excellent providers in specialty and radiology and hospitals and diagnostics, and we want to make sure it's maximized. And so you would challenge us to, with the staff members that we supply inside the health center, to make sure we're always making the appropriate and best referral patterns and even following up with those members to make sure, did they go to that specialist? Are they taking their medication effectively and what are some of the results? Where else can we help them in this, you know, patient healthcare journey? If we flip to the next slide, you can see that If we flip to the next slide, you can see that I tried to just give a little bit of an outline, like what are some of the differences and why does anyone do this? You know, we know we've got this network of providers, you've got probably quite a few primary care providers in this area, and we by no means expect to be a, you know, to be a replacement to that, I should say. We would like to be a supplement to that. If they've got a strong primary care provider they're using now, oftentimes with families too, the pediatrician's very, very important, all those things, we would never want to be a replacement to them, but we want to supplement it. So we would be able to provide, you know, acute care, keep them away from the expensive other forms of care, you know, emergency room being maybe one of the number one ones, but also provide, you know, that resource to get folks in that maybe haven't been seeing someone or don't have their diagnostic here. We can do cultures and the quick tests inside the center, labs and blood draws can be performed in your health center, so they're not making another appointment maybe to quest your lab for, they can get it done right there in the center. We stock medications in your center. We work real closely with your consultant and we take in the formulary and the utilization that you've got going on right now, and then we marry it up to generic lists, mostly generic list of medications to supply in the center. And these are all drivers. These are all reasons why your employees and staff, they come in because they know they're going to get a longer appointment, oftentimes up to 30 or 45 minutes with a provider and the nursing coaching staff, and sometimes they don't see that much time they get in the marketplace with other providers. So that sort of draws them in. Then they know that they can get their lab or blood draw done there, their culture done there, all in one spot, and in many cases, leave with some medications. So the time savings to them as well as the cost savings to you are some of the big differences in why folks have a dedicated onsite or nearsite health center for a school district like yourselves. Other things that I love to just point out too is if you are in the healthcare industry, you know, sometimes the time with the patients for maybe identifying other care needs, if they come in with a sore knee, but then they also need to have other things looked at, you know, their sleep or their mental health or behavioral health, that gives the provider a little bit more time with them to sort of navigate that care journey. The providers like working in these models, and I sometimes get asked about that too. One of the reasons they like working in the model is they feel like it brings them back a little bit to what, you know, they went to medical school for to begin with, and they're not necessarily having to, oh, I don't know what the words are, but maybe chase the deductibles and chase the coinsurance or out-of-pockets because it's all built into the model to begin with. And their incentives, if you're a provider, is in closing the gaps in care with the patient, not necessarily like how many appointments I had in a single day. So that can be an attractive feature sometimes to the providers. And of course, we cover all the malpractice and overhead and all the necessary things that you would expect as being a health center vendor. Last but not least is just the cost mechanism. We set this up, and you'll see costs in just a few more minutes, as a flat rate that you can use that to attract more even individuals coming into the school district, say that you want to, or you have an influx of more employees or something, you're not paying us more money unless we get to a point where we have to add more staff. So the costs are completely flat to what the appointment schedule looks like. So if we switch over to the next slide here, this one I
I'm sorry.
Yes.
How many staff does it cover?
Okay, so the staff model that we are offering in this is one provider with two nurses working together. Now, that can be changed in the future if, say, we see that the appointment schedule is just blowing up, and then we would work with your team to create like what's the next opportunity of addition or maybe some addition of services. We often get that too if a client is more mature after it's been in place for a few years and those service appointments start really maximizing and your engaged members are just using it more and more.
Using it more.
Yes, very good question. And any others before I keep going?
Well, I'll wait till you're done.
Oh, okay. Okay, no problem. I thought I would just give you a little snapshot of who our combined organization is. I love to point out that at Everside Marathon Health, we are solely in this line of business. We are not in an insurance company type arrangement, we're not a provider, health system. We are a manager of health and wellness centers for clients, and we do this all across the country. 680 health centers is what we have right now with 2 million members under our membership. Here in Florida, we have 34 public sector clients and we have six school districts who are already using this as a solution for their entire benefits package. 184 public sector too across the United States. All right, if we switch to the next slide, I thought I'd tell you a little bit about the complete care model as a whole and how we treat the patient. Oftentimes, people want to look at this a little bit and compare and contrast to what they know they have in the industry and in the market right now. And again, we're not here to replace anything, we're simply here to supplement. We can, of course, provide primary or preventative care. What we usually do is we try to tackle those members that haven't maybe seen any provider in the last couple of years and try and attract them into the center first. Oftentimes, we have those ranging upward to 25% of a population. It's not uncommon to see they haven't even gone to any type of provider. And even above that, we see others who the only type of provider they've seen is an urgent care provider. So we're trying to get folks to come in. A lot of times, it can be through, the first entry into the door might be as a new hire and they're getting their pre-employment testing done, or a physical done, or a bus driver that's getting maybe a C D L or a D O T physical done. Those can be certain entry points before they even come onboard as an employee. After that, we are looking at all kinds of different mechanisms from flu shot clinics to biometric screenings. We're trying to tackle, you know, any chronic conditions we see, if there's prediabetes or diabetes. We're looking at your referral management system. Everything on this slide in the green is stuff that is already embedded into the program, and then other items that are in dark green are ones that you can potentially add on in the future if you decide to do so. Mental health is one, for example, that every time they come in the door, we do the P H two and P H Q nine, depending on the results. We might be suggesting a referral or something. In the future, you might decide to have some therapy either available to members virtually or inside your center. That seems to be a real common one that I've been asked a lot of questions about lately is can we get therapy either inside our centers or through a virtual means? All right, let's move to the next one, if that's all right. So another thing you might be thinking is how do we implement a program like this? And implementation is what we do. That's why you hire a firm like us, whether it was us or anyone, you would want a manager to manage the aspects of your health center, and that's what we do. So we do it from a lot of different perspectives. We do it from getting to know you all as an organization and culture. We do it from the point of what kind of staff makes sense and what's your final scope of services that you want to implement. And we also do it from where do you want to have your center? Some clients choose to have your center at a nearby leased location that can be easily accessible for all your staff members. Some choose to have it on a physical repurposed piece of property that they might already have or already be thinking in their own mind. There's a lot of different ways to do this, and we're here and we know how to do it under different methods. We'll guide you through it. So we usually start out with identifying staff, talking about locations, creating a project work team, and both and all things are running simultaneously. While I'm working with your consultant over here getting claims data and your census feeds and all your network relationships, I've got another project team here working on the facility aspects, anything that we have to do for your facility. And then we have another team that's working on the marketing aspects and how are we going to draw in your membership to using this? Perhaps you're kicking it off with a health fair, whatever aspect are unique in particular to your culture is how we're going to help line up all these implementation milestones. Ultimately, it takes about four months usually, plus or minus on average. We do a grand opening, we have the provider on board and trained by then, you know, he or she is going around to department meetings and walking halls, doing all kinds of ways to drum up a pre-engagement before we even launch and we open the doors on your health center. I've been talking quite a bit, so I just want to make sure if I should stop for a couple of questions, I'm happy to do that before I go on to more about how we make something like this successful.
Okay. We can wait.
To the end? Okay. All right, no problem. All right, so moving along a little bit to how do we create the success that you're looking for? How do we get the members? How do we get the staff to use the center and all the effectiveness that we want from this and to get the right outcomes? So as I mentioned before, we've got pre-launch activities, we've got things that we're doing after we've launched and opened your health center, and then we have an ongoing cadence of ways in which we're engaging. And I just always come back to the fact that the first start, it becomes a cultural aspect, is making sure we know all the different points of communication that you have with your members, with your teammates, and we utilize those to the maximum. We might even make suggestions for you of ways in which to tackle and get to get the word out to your membership and create that engagement. Sometimes it's easier said than done. You might not always have everyone's email, you might not have everyone's phone or text or something, but usually there's a way of communication that works for every organization. We push out, you know, different methodologies. We also look at an automated fashion, we put up things in the break rooms, we would work from you, with you in the beginning on a coming soon scenario, and just really trying to get our arms around how are we going to get your teammates to use this? All right, we move to the next one. I love to talk about success stories, and this is a school district that I just wanted to showcase or highlight for you that started with us in January of 2020. They had a unique and a really excellent population engaged after even the first year at 46%, and their year two just grew astronomically. And some of the events and things that they did for everyone were they hosted a flu site clinic right away, they did have a health fair, and they did invite us in as a method of coming by, meeting the providers, offering some H R A biometric screenings, things of that nature to try and drive engagement. I think we did some gift cards and things like that to get people there. We did other things, like we had other incentives and we had weekly new hire tours where any individual that was coming through really got a chance to see all the things that the health center offered them prior to even coming onboard for an employment. And at the end of the day, they put up a lot of information. They had these scrolling screens, you might have some different places around different buildings, and it was constantly scrolling and reminding folks. They put a internet feed up on their website. I went to their website one day and I couldn't even get past the first screen without clicking that I knew that they had a health center. So it was a really strong, embraced cultural aspect that got people interested very quickly and involved in using the health center and knowing that it was such an incredible benefit they were getting for being a teammate there. One of the things that your committee actually challenged us to do and your consultant is to find out what other stats were for other schools in your area. And so I was really happy to bring that information to you that a client of ours, a longtime client, Polk County Schools over here, they had 48% engaged of their staff using the center after the first year. And then Lake County Schools, I almost didn't even believe Lake County Schools when they told me they had 70%. So when I dug in a little bit further, they also said that that number included some nurse-only hours where they had a nurse without a provider there doing some blood draws in the morning or taking blood pressure checks and doing some things, and that comprehensive total equaled 70% of their staff or members, I should say, that were actually using the health center within the first year. And then, as I said, I've got six school districts right now under contract with the blended Everside Marathon Health. So another thing I wanted to point out, success. We have a client here that's pretty close by, the city of Lakeland, they've been a client for 14 years, and this slide really illustrates, I think, quite a bit of, you know, what is possible with this and what can we accomplish. And they have a 97% engagement rate right now. Hopefully, are we on the right line? Oh, I did add a slide or something in case it's a little bit different. But one of the things I love to point out here is they challenged us quite a bit in the beginning, in the early stages, and that might be exactly where you are right now. They saw the future of healthcare costs increasing without revenues increasing. So when you look at this chart, their bottom line was, you know, we cannot find other forms of revenue. Our revenue's down here, but our healthcare costs are going up here. We got to get a way to tackle this and get more of our dollars spent back into the classroom and back into the funds that we need them in. So what we attempted to do was to create a baseline, which is like our green line here, that would have been just a very light trend factor that would have gone up, you know, in expenses just naturally over time. But we were so thrilled to save them over half, over half of their medical spend completely in that 14-year process. And through a lot of tactics of plan design, as well as the health center implementation and the enormous engagement they got out of their membership. So if you've moved to the next one
Shannon, can I stop for a second and just comment on this page? So what they've used here is an 8% healthcare trend, so I think we've talked in the past why healthcare keep going up, except for those years where we have an abnormal year and we don't see an increase. And it's really due to that healthcare inflation, so the cost of care goes up year over year. Thank goodness we have the treatments we have available to us, but they're more expensive year over year. And so 8% is pretty conservative of what I'm seeing right now. When you look at a combined medical and pharmacy trend, we're seeing above 8%. So what you're looking at the top line is if their claims, if their costs would have gone up 8% year over year, which is just a basic underwriting trend that you would use for insurance. And then the green line is what if we really did a great job and reduced that by 50% and brought it to a four? But what they actually did, and this was, I talked to Shannon about this to try to get more information, they modified their plan designs pretty drastically and tied a lot of things to using the health center. And so they got almost everyone that was eligible to go in there, and they actually beat what that 50% reduction was. I mean, their costs are nearly
A lot, especially about half.
Yeah, single digit.
Half of what they would have been.
Mm-hmm. So I think they did a great job. I have to say, they went at it aggressive because they needed to save the money.
They used the stick approach, I guess you might say, versus the carrot. They came up with a strategy that said, we need everybody getting H R A biometrics. We need everybody to do that and created an incentive that was so, so strong on their premium that it created them coming into the center. And then it did what we expected it to do, is people that never knew they had prediabetes or that they were diabetic, or they had a blood pressure issue, or just any, you know, cardiac situation, anything that was going on, thyroid, whatever, now we had something to work with and to avoid those future claimants. And I attribute a lot, a lot of that to, you know, the fact that they incented the H R A, the membership took those incentives and then did something with it. All right. So the next page, just, wow, it doesn't even compare to maybe the last one, but I did want to give you just a gauge. I gave a couple of models up here, my actuary team to help me with this, that what would be your scenarios? And I hate to paint that picture, but if you did not do anything and your trend kept going up by 6%, that's what the top line is, and if your trend kept going up by 8%, the bottom line, then we would be, you know, looking at more than double the expenses over a 10-year period on healthcare, probably not sustainable. And so, you know, taking some actions now, sometimes people have the thought process that it might be, well, this is a, if I have a higher trend this year, is this the year to take the action? But if we don't take the action, this, you know, model's just going to keep growing in the form of higher and higher output to your healthcare spend, and that's what I'm trying to model, 6 and 8%. Okay, well, if you'd like, I'll move on. So I worked really closely, again, with your committee and with your consultant on the health health plan to bring in a lot of your population information to make sure everything was very specific to Flagler County Schools. And what I wanted to show you on this page is there's not much to tell on here other than this is your real data, you have 1529 belly buttons, so to speak, on your health plan right now. And what I did after that is I broke down what would be the assumed participation. One of the things that we also did, and it was a committee member challenge to me, is we want to go as ultra-conservative with the potential of the assumptions that you're possibly going to get, even though I just showed you, let's not model that way. Let's model with a real low baseline assumption of how many people we think would actually come in a door and actually take action using your health center. And that's where I came up with the 36.5%. That's our lowest, lowest assumption baseline for the first year on our health centers and very, very achievable. And that's what I'm trying to illustrate on this page. Okay, the next one. So the next thing that we did is, again, Danielle's team was really helpful in this, is we brought in your actual claim spend. And it was two years of data, so that makes in underwriting terms a credible model of reflection. If you only had less than that, you might not say that, you might have said you had a bad year, just one bad year or something. So we had two years of credible data. And then what we did from there is we modeled out what your potential savings could be, even in the first year and then in consequent years. And, and this is just showing you, you know, the different categories of spend and how we will affect it and what the baselines are that we would affect it by. And remember, we're using the lowest utilization. We also, I always love to point out that I used a 6% trend factor, which it may not be accurate then, because if you have a higher trend factor, you have a greater degree of savings off of what your spend is versus the low increase that I assumed of only 6%. But you can see in first year, we would estimate a $521,000 difference between whether you had a health center in those expenses or you did not have the health center in those expenses. If we move off of this one and we look now a little bit about, okay, what does it take to start up a health center? And what I loved, I wish I'd even relabeled this slide to say investment for a startup of a health center, because you really are making an investment here if you choose to go forward with this. And there are things here that are variable and things that you can actually affect. And so some of the things that you might be able to affect is where? Where do we put the health center? If we put it in a nearby leased location, is it one that's already been built out to a medical space? Has it, do you have some space here we could repurpose? All those things are going to affect the cost of how much it is to start it up. I have school districts that have been very good at repurposing furniture even. They say, I've got exam room, or not exam room tables, but I have some waiting room furniture that I can put in there. I have some fixtures, I have some things of that nature that we could use. Anywhere we can find to save money for you all and bring down the expenses of your startup, we're going to do it. And a challenge that was given to me is, you know, give me all the types of things. And that's what I listed down here that go into building out a space versus repurposing a space or perhaps even using furniture or design elements or things that you might already have at your fingertips. You might even have facility crews that might be able to help us in the setup of one of your health centers. And if you're interested, we are too, and our project teams will work side by side with them to create whatever value and, and try to bring down any startup costs that you might have in setting up your center.
And when discussing this with Shannon, with the team, the most expensive way to implement this would be to lease a space that is not already a doctor's office, right? So you've got to redo pretty much an entire leased space, where, and you're paying construction crews to do that. More moderate would be if you already find a medical-grade space that was a doctor's office or an urgent care center or a wing of a doctor's office that you could repurpose for this. Or what I've had other clients do, I have a city client and they owned a house down the street, and they made the house their health center. So they just used their facilities crew to come in, redid it, they used it as not only a health center for medical treatment, they did their wellness seminars there whenever they had lunch and learns and such, that was their whole wellness center. So it's been really well received. That was the city of St. Cloud back in 2013.
Oh, yes, I toured that center too. And yes, it is a really interesting set. I, I mean, I love to tell people too, I've got ones who have modular units even. I mean, you might have modular classrooms, so you might be familiar with that idea. There's all kinds of different ways that you can do this, and we'll support, and we have avenues and resources that can take you down any avenue that you decide whether it's repurposing a space here or at a nearby building or something you own, it's a modular or a build-out, it's a leased location. We'll explore all those different avenues with you to try to bring this as more, as reasonable as possible. I always love to point out too, that you own equipment inside your centers, so you get tax-advantaged status of anything you're purchasing. You can, you can take those perhaps in a scenario of depreciation. I'm sure that would be a financial item for consideration, but you retain any ownership of anything you have inside a center that you built out. All right, we move on to the next one. So now we get into the meat of it, so to speak, the cost and savings projection. So to answer your question, this is where I had the one provider and the two medical assistants, 40 hours a week. You know, one of the things too, I didn't say before this, but I love to point out is when you have your own dedicated health center, you do have some flexibility that you don't have with providers in the outside market. You can design schedules a little bit. Maybe you have one evening that's a little bit later in the evening, or one morning that's a little earlier in the morning. Maybe you decide that you have a nurse instead of a medical assistant in one position where you have some of those nurse-only blood draw times or something. This becomes completely flexible, and we work with you all. You know, a typical expansion is someone eventually decides they want some Saturday hours, and we recruit for things of that nature. But for now, we're just assuming 40 hours a week, and whatever those 40 hours turn out to be, I placed over on the left side is your investment cost on year zero or year one. That coincides with the, the slide that was right in front of it as to why does that occur? Where is that? Is there some variability in that? And yes, absolutely, we might be able to make adjustments depending on the space and the furnishings and fixtures and things like that that you choose. But we got your 464 there. Then I love to just show the line right across. What's the, what does it cost us here for our management, of your staff, of your services, EMR, technology, all the things that we do to support your health center? That's what the operating expenses are across the line. Another area that is up for question is your lease and your utilities expenses. So that can be, I mean, you can eliminate it. It's sort of like buying the house versus renting the house. If you, if you rent it, you're going to have the expense. If you, if you don't, then you would be extracting that lease cost all across the line. The last, the next line down is your medication and labs, and that's an estimation, that is just a pass-through expense. It is what it is. What, you know, you hope is that people are using your labs and medications at the center, because in most instances, those can be operative at 50% discount versus what the same medication in that category would be in the outside market. We didn't, I, no one asked this question, might come up in Q and A after, but I'll address it now. We never house narcotics or scheduled twos or anything like that in your centers, and that would go, that would make sense. And we're real mindful as to what is stocked in the center for making sure that it is something that isn't going to expire quickly or it's not something that's going to be rarely used. And we'll be looking for the interaction of both the formulary and the provider and the season even. You know, you might have more of one type of medication in this season than another. So we're always going to be looking at all those type of elements to keep your costs low and, and making sure that that pass-through expense is mindfully watched. The rest of this shows what is the cost of the center with and without a center, where is the savings achieved? I, you know, I was challenged to build in your, your investment cost in the beginning as well as your lease cost in order to create your return on investment. And so those have been top-loaded, they are in here. This isn't just pure medical expense to medical expense, this includes all the startup expense and the ongoing lease expense. And I'm thrilled to tell you that even by month 30, we would be breaking even, even if we had these startup expenses that are estimated and your lease that's estimated, and that I used the lowest 36% assumptions, you'll recall, to how many people would use it the first year, and I only applied a 6% trend factor. So this modeling would look probably quite a bit different with some different expectations in there to what your healthcare costs would be in the future or additional engagement happening of your membership. The very bottom of this, sometimes people like to look at it in different ways, like you might want to look at it on a per, you know, belly button, per number, per month basis. And that's what I tried to do is break it out for you all the way down to that level. And there is a few recommended services that we had suggested that you could implement whenever you would like, but one, for example, that's very sought after is the virtual behavioral health services, provides up to unlimited 50-minute therapy sessions, a 12-hour scheduled day, and your memberships could take advantage of that. That's a, it's a pretty sought-after benefit as well as the health coaching virtually. Opportunities for other savings. I do not have included in your ROI things that we know are already occurring. We know you've got drug screens right now for pre-employment and have possibly randoms or suspicion. We know you've probably got some physicals happening as part of your employment screenings or D O T, C, D, L. All those things could be utilized inside the center and then provide you with a cost shift to something you're already paying for in the industry. So any of those current services you might have now. There's soft ROI that is attached to presenteeism, absenteeism, a less need for temporary staff because they can get in, they can get out, this is your dedicated health center. So we make sure that we earmark some appointments every day for those acute needs. Cost savings to your membership, we've got that estimated at $60,000, and that's just the fact that they're paying less or nothing to use your center versus what they might pay in outside urgent care, especially if they hit ER or some other fashion instead of using your health center. Workers' comp, I love to point this out, but I didn't include any savings in here, but a lot of our schools are dipping their toe in workers' comp pretty quickly after they set up a health center like this. And usually what they use it for at first is maybe some minor triage. One of the things that happens is if they're able to send a minor triage person to the health center, in a lot of cases, it doesn't become a recordable workers' comp claim later, and that can save some budgetary numbers on that side. So all things to explore, less recruitment and training, because it's a sought-after benefit, people tend to stay with you. And as I mentioned, tax depreciation on equipment or other things that you have inside the center. Performance guarantees, I, I just, you know, want to say that, that we feel very proud of this. We put our fees at risk, up to 10% of our operating fees are at risk. We weight them to, you know, the first thing, which is that your patients are satisfied and DS scores are high, you know, your staff, the clinical staff in there is performing well for you. We also weight them to how many people are engaged. You, you expect us to constantly be drawing them in, keeping them there, providing the best services. And then the clinical outcomes is a really good measure because it also ties back to how the providers are incented. So you want to see that gaps in care are closed, people are getting their physicals, and really what actions are being taken on the health coaching side. And so I end with just what can we solve together? You know, we want to be a good partner to Flagler County Schools. We want to be here to lower your healthcare expenses, improve the health of the employees or families, offer copay savings to the membership. You expect us to really know and be the experts to the whole implementation process and to sit with your consultants in the future to review the population health reports, to make recommendations. Everybody working in a cohesive team as a, as a manager to this health center, that's what we're here and prepared to do. And I thank you so much for the money we present to you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good.
A lot of information.
Clinic hours, are Saturdays an option or is that up to us? Because I just want to make sure staff is able to be seen.
Sure. So the 40 hours a week is flexible. It, it really comes down to how do we recruit? And if we, you know, find the right provider and, and medical team, then certainly we can ask that perhaps they are not filling the 40 hours in just a traditional nine-to-five type scenario, but trying to find that provider that would be willing to work a Saturday. The other thing that we could do is split providers and have maybe two, like one doing 20 hours a week here and 20 hours a week there or something. But it's a common, it's a common question that we get asked, and we'd be working alongside you all to try and create what the best schedule would be.
So there's, there would be like a pool of providers, hopefully?
Yes, our recruitment team would be bringing candidates to you all, and you can be as involved as you like, or maybe you have a steering committee, like a smaller one, that would like to sit through some interviews to make sure they're cultural fits. And, and of course, you know, you'd be telling us what your alignment is to ours. And if, if it was unreasonable, we would let you know too. If you were like, we want somebody here till midnight, you know, or something, we'd probably be like, well, we're not going to get any candidates that are going to jump on the bandwagon for, for that type of position. But we'd be sitting alongside you, creating what is ideal and then what the candidate pool is out there, and then coming together with, you know, a variety of candidates that would be presented for possibility, really, for the staff.
And staffing, I saw there's two medical assistants, so is one like working in the lab? Because just myself, I only work with one medical assistant.
Yes, yes. Well, the request on that was, A, if one, God forbid, calls off or something, that you would automatically have one, and they'd create that cohesiveness inside the health center. One can be working the desk and answering phones. One can be doing outreach to, to memberships, especially those after they have completed maybe an HRA biometric. And there's, there's a lot of, there's a lot of different reasons why they thought two would be better than just having one. I originally even thought that you might, and I always just suggest this, you might consider switching out one of the MAs to like an LPN or an RN, but that could be something for the future. And the only reason for that would have been just if you chose someday to have a nurse-only style appointments. Yeah.
What is the qualification of your provider?
Qualification of the provider? The type of provider that we had listed in here would be either a nurse practitioner, advanced nurse practitioner, or they, or a physician's assistant, either of those two. If we stepped it up to a medical doctor, it would be, it'd be a lot more money.
Yep, yep, yep. I just carried.
Just a quick follow-up to that. My mom's a retired nurse practitioner, and when she was in a clinic setting, she, at the, this was, this was years ago, but she had to have a medical doctor almost as her supervising. Is that still the case today? Cool.
It can be autonomous.
Cool, okay.
But I do have good news on that. We will have an off-site supervising MD that will be a part of this package that's being offered to you. And so they'll always have that access to, you know, especially peer-to-peer consult or review anything, but it's-
Maybe it's over a number of the-
Exactly. It wouldn't just be one-to-one, it would be a number of them, but it's an off-site Florida-based supervising MD that can provide that, that level of support they, they need. And then our provider I did mention too, also has the ability to do peer-to-peer e-consults, not just with that supervising MD, but with other industry specialists. For example, one of the most common that always comes to my mind is they might have a individual patient that presents like with a rash, and they think, they think that they're going to take a certain protocol of treatment, but they just want to double-check it or something, and then they, they might be doing an e, an e-consult virtually with a dermatologist, and that's all included as part of our technology and inside this embedded program.
Bob, do we have like a location we're thinking about somewhere?
We, we've been in very early stages of looked at a couple of different possibilities. You know, I, I call it my field trip, where I'm taking a couple of people downstairs to a couple of different training rooms that would have the square footage and very preliminary discussions.
What is the square footage recommended?
Oh, I would say 1,600 to 2,200. So most centers of your size come in around 1,800 to 2,000, I'd say. It, it, and it can, and then I've had ones that are 2,500 and, you know, 2,800. It, it, and it can, and then I've had ones that are twenty-five hundred and, you know, twenty-eight hundred. If you have this vision of doing a lot of OCH Health in there in the future, I don't know if you do. But if you did, it might be helpful to have a little extra space because you could then eventually have some PTE or have some other providers in there that might help you out on the workers' comp or OCH side. But that, I, you don't need that for day one.
So just a question on that. My mom's background is actually OCH Health.
Oh.
But she, we're Midwest, meatpacking houses, very luxurious. So that was so...
Very luxurious.
Very luxurious. Great smells. So as far as repetitive injury, like what would it, I'm just, I don't mean to be ignorant here, but why would OCH Health be relevant to a school district?
You'd be surprised.
Yeah, no, I'm just, I...
Sure, sure.
I'm just, I'm trying to think of like, I can see like carpal tunnel or, you know, but I'm trying to think of what all...
Any, any really workplace injury, whether it be a slip, a fall.
Yeah.
It could be an injury with a student, for example. Yeah.
But like to such a volume that we would have to maybe think long-term of like a whole OCH Health?
Oh.
Expansion?
Well, some of the other school districts, what they have done is they blended it with their primary care at their centers. And so they have a, a provider that handles the work site injuries and the case management of those and, and kind of following those cases forward. But they see everything from people falling off a ladder to, you know, just all kind, like you said, all kinds of slip and fall injuries. Unfortunately, the occasional, you know, scenario where there might have been some ruckus that was caused with another person on, on the campus. Things that happen in your parking lot, things I've got, you know, if you have people that are on the ground, they get stung by bees, they get stung by, there's like, there's, there's all kinds of different things that happen.
Is that just real quickly, well, is that an issue for Flagler Schools? Workers' compensation, occupational?
Workers' comp in every, in every organization is an issue. And we have our share of workers' comp claims.
Do we have programs or, I mean, I think, again, I'm, please, no, I'm like factory mindset, right? Where it's like twenty days without an accident. Like, do we have programs to try to reduce? And I don't mean to go off on a tangent, I just, this never occurred to me that this was a...
We have required training in certain departments in terms of lifting and working with chemicals, that sort of thing. But we don't currently have any formal wellness programs that we're providing or like safety, like injury reduction, to my knowledge.
And I think the other piece is one, kind of what Shannon and I'm sharing is once you have your, your foot in the door with a healthcare center, the needs of your organization can be assessed. For example, when we went to the city, the county of Lake County, what they had kind of added most recently to their emphasis was a, a mental health counselor or a therapist.
Whatever the respective need is.
Exactly. They were assessing the need of their organization and that was their add. Another thing that they added was like a separate exam room for their, their physicals, for their annual physicals requirements for their fire department. So, you know, we see things like moving forward, a chance to, you know, add some kind of, you know, additional exam area or things like that for our DOT, DOT physicals and things like that. So it would be, you know, that's part of the process is talking with them and, and doing the assessments of, of your workforce each year, some what are our needs? And when we address those needs, the, the flip side on that is you're also addressing culture of the district because that's part of the retention plot, the pluses in retention.
Is this going to be available to all staff or you have to have the insurance beyond the plan? You know what I mean?
We would, we would set those, those boundaries right now. The, the off-site clinic that we have available is for those with a medical plan. And this was modeled after that assumption to our members with a medical plan.
So you choose not to take the insurance, could you self-pay to be seen in the school clinic?
We've talked about that. We could, we, none of that, yeah, it's, it's not, you know, part of the...
A self-pay or maybe some kind of incentive plan where, you know, there is a, a first visit or something like that at a, at a reduced cost to try and get people into it to realize that, you know, this is a benefit. Then, you know, maybe I would want to, you know, go ahead and enroll in our health plan if I'm not already doing so because it comes with this benefit.
And you talked about medications and we would have like certain antibiotics onsite, things like that.
Yeah. We, we usually can stock up to about two hundred or so different medications. I mean, it could be a lot, almost all generic. Every once in a while, if there were a highly-used brand that's showing up in the formulary and that the provider is noticing is, is being requested, of course, they can e-prescribe to the retail or they can get it through mail and delivery. But, but then those, those kind of conversations might lend itself to, do you want to stock this? A lot of our centers are choosing now to have diabetic supplies inside the centers as well. And that can be something that you look at going forward depending on what we see in the population.
Malpractice insurance, would that go through you guys?
Yes.
Yeah. This would be my last one. Is it electronic medical records and does it communicate with other systems?
Yes, it has complete interoperability and a well-known electronic medical record platform. And that's all on us, yes, absolutely. We also have the portal and app, I didn't get too far into that. But you, all of your membership would have access to an app. They could make appointments online, they could see their medical records online, text message and, and in a secure fashion with the provider team. All of those, those types of technologies are available.
Do you have something?
I, I think Christie covered most of them, I, and I, in regards to malpractice. So are they our employees?
No, they're not.
Or yours?
They would be our employees, yes.
Okay, so liability-wise, that's under you all?
Yeah.
Okay, very good. And then the other, the only other thing I would say is we, we're exploring this right now, right? This is just exploring, doesn't mean we have to do it. We're just exploring what the situation may be. So as we kind of get into the next presentation, I think that that's just something important to keep in the back of our minds. It's a great plan. I think it would be a great benefit to our school district financially. I think just keep that in the back of your mind.
And, you know, I think it was in Lake County or Lakeland. You had said that they had kind of modeled their, their plan to incentivize use of the health center, right? So what, what did that look like exactly? Like what type of incentives were, was it a lower premium? If you went first to the medical center? Can you elaborate on that or?
Yes. I wish my operations person was with me too. I mean, it's been a client for fourteen years. But from my memory is what they chose to do is incent the membership to get their health risk assessment, biometric screening done at the health center. And that afforded them a lower premium. That's, that was one of the sticks that they took. So if I'm looking at paying two different premium amounts, I'm going to come in. And, and it wasn't just that I come in one time, but they had to get it done and they also had to have a follow-up visit to go over their results. And those actions are what helped drove that incredible engagement. And then what drove the actions that were being taken, you know, a lot of them didn't know. They didn't know they had this availability of the health center staff to help them and coach them through some of these.
So they basically mandated it?
They did, they did. They, they pushed it. Well, I mean, you, you...
Yeah.
I mean, you can pay a higher premium.
Right, there were options. It's just, but if you wanted this premium, you have to follow these procedures.
Yes, sir.
So, because it, it, under that plan, it wouldn't be covered if they went somewhere else to have those screenings done.
It is covered. So it, because it would still be covered under their self-funded health plan. But they would have to pay a higher premium. And then for those acute visits, so not your wellness, they had a high deductible plan where they'd have to pay two hundred dollars for that same visit instead of just going to the health center and having it for free.
Okay, so the deductible kind of offset that, the visit outside of the health center?
Right.
Okay. And then the, you know, I believe there was a mention that they achieved about a seventy percent participation? Was that, did I hear that correctly?
That was on another particular group. They, they...
Lakeland was up to ninety-seven percent.
Yeah, the city of Lakeland was ninety, is ninety-seven percent engaged. The city of Lakeland, city of Lakeland versus the Lakeland, versus Lake County Schools. I know we keep...
There's too many lakes.
There's too many lakes. Lake County Schools was at seventy percent first year. Lake, the city of Lakeland is at ninety-seven percent, yes.
One thing I, I, that sounds like great success, right? And then, but it's, it's, now you've got majority of your, your participants in your healthcare plan going to one place, right? And so, you know, as that evolves, you know, how does wait times come in, access, and then increased cost of providers to accommodate the additional? How did that balance in once they achieve those higher numbers? Because the cost savings, there's, you know, once you add, once you get to a certain point, you have to add another nurse or RN or provider, some provider of some sort. So I, I'd be curious to know as that, that, the growing pains, if you want to call it, you know, then does, does it, now does everybody say like, hey, yeah, I'm paying less, but I, you know, I, I gotta wait three weeks, four weeks?
And you never want that to happen.
Right.
So the goal is always to be able to get in within a day or two. So that's constantly tracked. If you can't get in that same day, you want to be able to have an appointment within two days. As we go through our monthly meetings with the clinic management companies, and I've worked with several, Everside being one, you talk about those metrics and how things are performing and you have to make adjustments as needed. So if we're seeing that this is an issue, then come back to the board. This is what the ROI would be for adding another position and let the decision be made. Financially, it makes sense to add that rather than those employees going outside of the health center because you're paying a fixed cost rather than the fee for service that's happening elsewhere if you can get the volume in, right? So it's, I would say the ninety-seven percent is where we hope to be in five years.
And you probably won't have just one provider in that, and if you get to that.
But again, I wonder if ninety-seven percent is a good number? If you, if you have that many people coming into one bucket of healthcare, right? To maintain a level of service for a smaller organization, you know, the costs that, that will have to continually be poured in to, to give the quality of medical care, right? That, that would be my concern about that. Of course, it has to sustain itself if we're going to do this. But where's that? Is there a breakpoint? Have, have these municipalities been able to keep that to date or, or, or not, right? That would be the goal. But are they actually able to do that with a ninety-seven percent participation?
And it also depends on your population, right? So ninety-seven percent engaged of a healthy population, that's like me going once a year to my, my doctor. I only need to go once a year and have my labs and that takes one, maybe two appointments. But for the first couple of years, you're probably going to have more of your higher risk needing to come in a few times at least. So I think as you get healthier over time, while your engagement can go up, your number of visits per person should be going down, right? As you're catching them, yeah.
And, you know, it's just, it's just that again, it can, we can work against itself. It's like, so, okay, great, I got this lower premium now. My obligation per month is less. And if I have, you know, a serious illness, okay, I got some backstop. But maybe I say, you know what, I'm not going to do these because I can't get in because it's three weeks and I, and I, it doesn't work for me, you know? So I, I'm just saying, those are part of the concerns I have with us, you know, becoming, you know, a doctor's office, you know, as a school. And so definitely need a lot more understanding of how these, these programs have worked and...
And I think that that really leads us into the second part of the conversation with seven point zero two. Because what I, what I hear you talking about is we have all of these people that are now coming in. How are we going to sustain that level of service? But we, what our, or our goal would be is that we would be able to afford to add additional staff members into the center because we're not paying out additional or the high-level costs that we're currently paying out because our staff is going to other healthcare options.
Right.
Yeah, because personnel is always one of the highest costs in most, any organization, including ours, right? So, and so therefore that is one of those costs that's hard to balance between service and, and the dollars available to, to pay for that service. One other question on the, on the providers. Are these, will these providers be the same all the time or do they rotate out? So I go in, I see a doctor, I, or a nurse, and I get comfortable. They do my, my annual physical and everything, and finally I come back. Next time, is it like that, I'm going to see a different person?
That's not the goal. The goal is that you have a provider you're making a deep and long relationship with. And the same with the medical assistance staff or the nursing staff. That, that is the goal now.
And they don't rotate amongst other health services?
That's what I was meant to say. When you say provider, I think you're like, okay, we've got somebody available, we'll send them to Flagler, right?
Absolutely not. You would have, let's say, nurse practitioner Jenny, and she is your assigned person and she's there for forty hours a week, going out, meeting your employees, having meetings with department heads, really trying to get to know everyone and build that trust. So it's the same provider and that, that would be Jenny in this circumstance.
And that example of one of the, the medical assistants being out, do you have people within your organization that would come and fill in that spot for the day?
Yes, we do.
And you handle all that staffing and...
That's, that's what they, you're hiring us for is to handle all that.
So basically, it's all personnel, basically, you're managing.
Yes.
And the, the risk and liability from the malpractice side. And all we're doing is providing the, the physical space to operate in and pay the cost to operate the center and, and for the providers.
Yes, that's absolutely right.
What's our current, I'm sorry, what's our current utilization?
Within...
With the clinic we have now?
We don't have unique member utilization because we don't have that type of reporting with them. But we do have how many appointments are filled per month and it fluctuates between, it's sometimes in the seventies and eighties, eighty percent of the appointments.
Okay.
Yeah.
How often do you review the status of, of participation?
Monthly.
Monthly? Because that's a big piece of it. I think that's important to see.
It's actually managing it, right?
Yeah, exactly. Because then you know whether, what you need to add or what you need, you don't need or...
And we can even, I mean, we have all the HIPAA protections in place and, and, you know, all the PHA privacy in place. You'll have a HIPAA officer who can look at certain things, especially if it's somebody who's a new hire coming in versus somebody that's already on board. But the things that you might care about too are the type of visits. Like are they most office, most often coming for a certain type of visit type? And we'll be able to drill down and do the reasons and why and, and even down to medication appointments or lab draw appointments or really kind of getting our feel around, you know, your cultural aspects and, and where the need is so that when we come back together and hopefully we're working with your consultant on the plan, health plan side, and everybody's looking at that same population health analytics that we're bringing to the table, we can see a pattern there that tells us something. Like what are, what are the folks struggling with the most here? And, and then maybe where is that where we go next if it's the diabetes or the weight management? Or we're just, you know, noticing things as, as we're working in one collective cohesive benefit program for y'all.
And that ten percent, you know, satisfaction guarantee? How does that come into play? How, how often is that reviewed? And how, how do we, in, in the event that things aren't working out, how does that get applied?
Yes. So, so, you know, we have to wait till a full calendar year before we can assess because you're always doing a look-back period. But things from a functional standpoint, you know, the NPS scores, the satisfaction scores are being measured consistently from the day that the center's open onward to making sure that, you know, the prior team is performing the way they should for your membership. Engagement, we'll be able to see it. We'll be able to see how many people you've got coming in and how, and how frequently they are. And are we hitting the benchmark data that we agreed, that we mutually agree to on engagement? And then clinical outcomes, there's a whole bunch of different scores on that. And I always, I always preface that is if we can't get them in the door, I mean, we have to get them in the door to get the baselines, to make those guarantees to the clinical outcomes. But there's a whole bunch of different categories there that you want to hold us accountable to is, if, you know, just a simple example, I'm not sure if you're in provider or medicine yourselves, but... but, um, you would want us to be taking action if someone has come in the door with A1C levels of a certain category. Have we gone through the other, um, gaps and care steps with them and closed those gaps? And those are all those kind of measurements that are going to roll up, um, that we're going to be performing and, and evaluating with you on a yearly basis to show you, you know, where we're at, that we hit the benchmarks that were agreed upon. If we didn't, and God forbid if we don't, then, you know, what is the portion of credit that's applied to that metric? And, um, and that, that, uh, discount or credit is applied to future bills? Yeah. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Would we be able to see, I'm just kind of thinking about a lot of Will's questions. Would we be able to see like a, a real world? This, this feels a bit like a puzzle, right? Like lots of pieces coming together. Um, we have a body of employees that happen to be, I believe, the largest in Flagler County, right? Are we still the largest employer here?
Yes.
So, um, going back to kind of the questions Will was asking, we have a certain percentage of staff who would need mammograms every year. We have this, we just know like what the picture is of healthcare a bit, right, for our staff. What does that look like in terms of, I used to go to Advent Health for everything? Where am I, why am I so, you know, why would I still go there versus now the clinic? Um, it would just be interesting to get a little bit of, more of a handle from a very real world perspective. Um, the other piece of that is, I assume this is for staff and their family members who are on the plan? Well, now exponentially, right? I mean, when you talked earlier, like, visits might be 30 or 40 minutes. I'm doing the math, like eight hours a day, right? 30 to 40 minutes. It's not just our staff, it's also, they happen to have four kids, right? And they're all on the plan. And, um, again, just going back to that, it feels like a puzzle. It just feels like a lot, but I think it would be so beneficial just to get very real world example with this. Um, the other thing, I'm just gonna, I bring it up every time, and I certainly brought up with you guys on the video call. Um, it would be interesting to learn from a stick and carrot perspective. What is, like, what can we do? What can't we do? Um, because I know part of it deals with bargaining. There's just so much involved. Like, you know, I've brought up sick time. Are we incentivizing our employees to not take sick time because it's part of their retirement plan? You know, I, I can't use my 12 days a year because that's, I'm gonna, I'm gonna retire with tens of thousands of dollars if I don't go see the doctor. Meanwhile, we have these high costs that are hitting us because they're not going to the doctor. Um, and of course, I, I want everyone to know, I care about our employees, but I also have to think about us as an organization. So, um, I'll stop with that piece of it. I just, I think I would appreciate just knowing a little bit more, um, the details of all of this, the weeds of all of it. But I was also going to ask Patty, who's in mid-sip right now. Um, sorry. So that I don't forget, whether we look at, you talked about leasing versus, you know, if we like own something, I, what, um, what pocket, what bucket of money does all of this? Because I know, it seems like we have more capital dollars, we have reserve funds versus, will we be able to know what that looks like?
Everything in this topic comes from the self-insurance fund in this, in this first topic.
Everything in here comes from the self-insurance.
In the next agenda item, we're going to be talking more about some of these-
Finance.
Finances, so that might be-
If we can talk about that, because it would just-
That's next.
Can we get a five-minute break?
Yeah, I was gonna-
Everything comes from your self-insurance. Everything that we're talking about here comes out of your self-insurance fund.
Okay. And so, uh, Board, do we have any other questions, uh, on this agenda item 7.01? No? Okay.
Thank you.
Very much.
Thank you.
I'll just stand as well.
Oh, my God, I know.
Before you guys recess for a moment.
Delaney has a quick question.
Okay. We have one.
I have a question. Um, do Everside or Marathon Health, do they have any history with intergovernmental cooperation or usage for things like labs or physicals to get utilization up?
Um, intercooperation, I'm not sure.
For instance, if the school district were to go forward with this clinic, you're trying to increase utilization-
Yes.
And you make an arrangement with the sheriff's office that they're going to run all their labs or physicals through?
Yes, we do, actually.
You have done that with other-
We do have some scenarios. Um, it, you know, I, I always preface this that if it is Flagler's dedicated health center, then they would have the choice of allowing that. Um, but absolutely, they, you can make that choice if, if you would like to allow another county, city, inter-organization to utilize a portion or all. It is all, it's your dedicated center, your investment dollars. But there could be some advantages to that because in those situations, um, an agreed upon dollar amount would be able to be flowed back to the schools to help support the expense that their membership then is using of your services. But that's a good question.
Has it been your experience that it's for discreet things, not usually for general care, but things like labs or physicals?
Yes, yes.
Mr. Delaney, I don't, you probably don't know already, but Flagler County has their own clinic. They do. And we had asked prior if they could, who could possibly-
Partner.
Partner. They're not interested because they have a much smaller population than we do. There's no value in it for them. They want to keep it in-house. So, you know-
We, we offer that level of flexibility, and we understand that these are your choices. And so, um, just like a choice can be made, you asked a question about sick time. There are some schools across the nation that make a choice to allow, um, their teammates, their staff members to use the centers outside of PTO. That is, without having to use PTO, that is a choice that you all get to make in these decisions. Um, it can be another reason why engagement would be higher if that choice is made, um, that they don't. And they, and they usually earmark it with an amount of time, like you get up to X, Y, Z, so it's not a big broad, you know, but maybe you get one hour or something.
One more quick question.
Okay.
Tell him it, like, say a teacher doesn't want to leave their classroom for the day. Can they do a 15-minute?
Absolutely, yes. Any visit can be, that, that is capable of being converted to virtual. If it needs to have an ear looked at or something, then they're going to be honest with the person to say, I, I really need to schedule you for an in-center visit. Yeah.
Okay, great. Thank you all very much. We're gonna take a short recess.
Thank you.
We're now moving on to Agenda Item 7.02, Insurance Rates for Next Year.
Furry, at this time, I'm going to ask Danielle from Brown and Brown to kind of walk through some of the portions of next year's costs and the state of our current plan.
So really, the purpose here today is give you a lay of the land as to how things are running your current plan year, which was September 1st, 2023 through August. So the way that your plan's funding is set up is that the board contributes a defined amount every month, the employee contributions as well, and they all go into the self-insurance fund. Expenditures come out of that fund as claims come through and you pay your admin fees each month. And so we track that on a monthly basis, and that's where our budget report really comes in. And the rates that are established, which are the board rates plus the employee contributions, are established by an actuary. So it's not me, it's not a Blue Cross, it's not any insurance carrier saying this is how much we're charging you. This is a projection or a prediction based on modeling what your costs will be over a certain period of time. So just to lay that groundwork. If we could go to the budget report for page three. You all are familiar, I believe, with this report, but really, your eyes will be drawn to red and green right there in the middle. And what we're tracking here is your performance of the plan. So it's really your claims that are that variable cost. They fluctuate month over month, and they tend to trend upward year over year. In some years, they trend upward more than others. And so what we're seeing here is an escalation in the 2022-2023 plan year wherein your costs were really going up quite a bit. You were funding about $955,000 total into the plan, and your costs were over a million more months than they were not. And if you look at from April through August, every single month ran over budget. And that continued into this plan year that you're in now. And so that's what an actuary would say, you're trending hot, or you're trending upward. So that plan year, you did, after pharmacy rebates came in to play, we did see a slight green of $140,000. So that's after stop-loss reimbursements and your pharmacy rebates were paid back to the district. All of that goes back into the self-insurance fund piggy bank. And you were left with an excess of $140,000 versus what was funded into the plan for the plan year. If we go to page four, the purpose of this page is really just to show you the volume of high-cost payments over 100,000 that we had in the 22-23 plan year, the most significant of which were the top four that breached your $225,000 individual specific stop loss. So the district only owns up to 225,000 of any one person's claims for the year, and then the rest is transferred to stop loss. But you did see quite a few that hit stop loss for that year, more than you've seen in prior years since I began working with the district. You also saw what we would call those mid-level claims of 100,000 up to that $225,000 mark, where you're owning that whole thing. So those can really get a lot of red on the chart because you're paying so much for that just one person instead of just run-of-the-mill usage. On page five, this was, to remind you, for the 23-24 plan year, we were not projecting an increase. And that was because the funding rates were established when things were still running well. So prior to that April timeframe, when we started seeing the claims tick up, or when your funding rates were finalized for the 23-24 plan year. So we didn't increase the board's contribution nor the employees' contribution. And because the claims kept going up and the funding stayed stagnant, we kept seeing red. And so where we're at right now is after stop-loss reimbursements and pharmacy rebates that have been received so far in the 23-24 plan year, which were two rebate payments of about 250,000 each, we're just sitting in the green at 85,000 for this plan year. So the reason that we're showing you this is to paint the picture for the next two pages. So on page seven, I'll walk you through the setup of this page. On the left column, you can see the renewal options, plan year. TPA is your third-party administrator, so you pay Florida Blue to process your claims. That number also includes quantum health in the cost of 565,000 when we go to the fixed fees. So we're looking at current baseline of 11.8 million in cost, or in funding, sorry. So that's what we projected, and I say we, the actuary, said your cost should be 11.8 million dollars for the 23-24 plan year. After getting updated claims with data through November, whereas the projection was data through, I believe, February, when we finalized the funding for the plan year, we're now projecting that your cost for this plan year will be 1.2 million dollars above what was funded. So 10% over what has been budgeted currently. So where does that money come from? Where does the 1.2 million dollars come from if employees are only contributing X and the board's only contributing Y? It spins down the reserve that you have, and the reserve is there for this reason. So we try to build up a reserve, and we have done a great job since 2013 of building up a self-funded reserve. But we're going to be spending that down by about 1.2 million if things continue to run as they are for this plan year. Then on the next two columns, where you'll see no health center and then Everside On-Site Health Center. The no health center is apparent, so you're not making the investment in the Everside model. So your costs are projected to be 1.8 million above your current funding.
This is for next year?
Yes. So a 16% increase from your current 11.8 million dollar total funding. So the delta there becomes, we need to find, or we're going to be spending down 1.2 million of the reserve, and we have to increase or spend down the reserve further to find that other 1.8 million for the 24-25 plan year. Now, there are some assumptions, because we don't have your stop loss or your renewal from quantum that is coming any day now. So we've kept those at a conservative increase. 599,000, we increased from 565,000 for the TPA. So that's still, we don't know where that's going to fall, but those are not big dollars in the scheme of things. Stop loss, we applied a pretty conservative increase to the stop loss as well. So I'm comfortable that this is a conservative estimate from the actuary with the unknowns that are still out there. Now, on the far right, as we just reviewed with Shannon, there's an investment that comes into play year one of the health center, and that is the bottom 1.1 or just about 1.2 million dollars. That constitutes the startup fees, which are still unknown, right? There was about 300 to 400,000 dollars that we aren't sure what we're going to spend to get the health center up and running if you go in that direction. But about 650 to 700 was known. That's an expenditure for year one, operating expenses and medications and labs. The healthcare savings from the proposal that Everside provided, and this was based on the conservative assumptions of the lower participation, was 521,900. So the overall impact, whenever you just do the health center claim savings, add the health center cost, comes out to a 2.5 million dollar increase from current funding. So that's your increase in claims cost that we're looking at, plus the 1.2 million for the health center, minus the 521,000 dollars in savings from the health center. So I have several exhibits that will follow this that kind of show you some options for breaking down the cost share and what you may be looking at for this renewal. But any questions on this page, we'll move into that.
Now, and for the benefit of the public, we all met individually to kind of dig into the details of it.
Right.
And I would just want to clarify something. Basically, you're seeing that our clinic that we have with Advent is kind of a wash.
We're counting it as a wash.
So we're not necessarily saving anything or gaining anything monetarily with that arrangement. So if we didn't have it, potentially it could cost us less or it could cost us more. We just don't have enough data to know where it's landing?
That's correct.
Okay.
Is the Advent piece included in the 24-25 column where it says no health center?
It's not, but I'll show you in the current baseline and the re-projected, you see the red 264,000 savings number that's attributable to Advent. We also add it back in under our fixed fee, so it becomes a wash. And it's just because we don't have the reporting to show.
Yeah, okay. Gotcha.
I guess I do have a question before we move on. Something that, speaking of the video call, something that came up was the possible impact that the pandemic had of, you know, one or two years, I'm included in that, where I was afraid to even go to the doctor because I didn't want to get exposed from medical staff. So that we possibly had more claims because people just, a lot of people just didn't leave their homes for two years, right? So as far as like projections for the next year, is that factoring in like that it may not follow the same trend because that buildup is not going to be in existence anymore?
So there, what the actuary uses is the most recent 18 months of claims. So it's statistically relevant. But to your point, if things did calm down, you would perform better than budget, and that would be a better scenario than we're in now. But we don't want to say we think that that's what it is.
We don't want to plan for that. So we could be pleasantly surprised.
Exactly.
But we don't want to plan on it being lower, better.
But is that even a metrics that the actuary takes into account, or do they just look at the hard numbers, no matter what was the cause or effect?
There are several different levers that go into the formula. So one is high-cost claims. We don't want to project or trend forward million-dollar claims. So those come out of the equation before trending forward that cost, and then they're added back in. If you were making plan design changes, there's a decrement or a formula for those plan design changes, saying we think that this is going to save you $30,000 because of this plan design change. There's a lot that goes into it. But if an as-is renewal, where you're not making plan changes, we don't expect significant migration from one's plan to the other. They just take the most recent 18 months of claims, project that forward for the next policy year.
And I'm going to tell you, along with Sally, I believe that the pandemic is really responsible for where we find ourselves at this particular time of having so many more high-ending insurance issues. Because we're being forced now to hire older employees that come with more health issues because we cannot locate younger and startup teachers. And I believe we've somewhat, this is, we're feeling that now. We're getting reaction to that, and that's why you have so many claims that are, that we never had before, that high, because it's an older population that we're getting, and they have to, they have higher health needs.
Of course, that does happen. As we age, we become more costly to the healthcare system.
Absolutely.
The other impact of COVID was many of us didn't have our screenings and potentially are catching things at a later stage than we would have otherwise.
That too.
So I'm seeing that across my book of this.
Yeah, yeah, that's not a surprise to me. And that's what I'm thinking. This is, and I don't know how long it's going to take us to get out of that situation. It's going to take us a long time.
That's the unknown, right?
Yeah.
I think the COVID rebound of the, I delayed my knee surgery, or I delayed a, something that is, something you can delay and still be okay, but you have to get it taken care of. I think we're almost out of that.
Yes.
Right? But it's the other.
Yeah, the other.
I think I read a portion in here somewhere, but, or we might have talked about it in the meeting, but do you feel like there's an unusual amount of cancers, like more than usual, or cardiac issues?
Yes.
Elder. And there's no way, we can't, until we can attract, and this whole, and it's not just here, it's national, it's a national problem, we all know that. You know, we can't, we're not attracting, a lot of people don't want to be teachers anymore. They don't want it. Because a lot of the aggravations and the rules and the states and regulations, they said, heck, I'm going, I can make more money doing something else instead of doing, you know, working remotely. And I get it. So I don't know how long it's going to take us to get out of it, but it's an interesting concept.
So not something that I want to talk about now, but it just seems like between this presentation and the last one, it just keeps coming up, the importance of catching something early. And that's just something, maybe a later conversation, I'd love to dive in more, I already brought it up, but what are the rules and regulations? I mean, I know back in the day, it was like employers could charge you more for your premium if you were a smoker. You know what I mean? If you were, you know what I mean? Like, what is legal, what isn't? You know, how do we, we can't necessarily force people to do anything, right? Like, we can't force you to, but if it makes that much of a difference to the bottom line of this, what legally can we do? Like, what are those different levers we can pull?
I can hit on that for just a minute.
Oh, okay.
So tobacco is its own thing. You can charge up to a 50% penalty for those that are tobacco users, but you have to provide a reasonable accommodation, smoking cessation program, and they still get to pay the lower rate. But wellness-related is a little ambiguous right now. There was some EEOC and ADA issues that came up a few years ago wherein they, the perspective was if you charge a much higher rate for someone that doesn't have a biometric screening or whatever you're asking them to do, it is coercing them to do that because otherwise they can't afford their health insurance. So you're basically forcing them to go through blood testing and these things that we don't feel like you should force anybody to do. So the best practice from our compliance team is that instead of doing a premium reduction, you give that money to them in a different way. So you get wellness funds from Blue Cross every year. Maybe earmark that money and say, if you come in for a comprehensive health review with the, with the health center, or you have your preventive procedure or your exam, and we have the reporting to show that, you get $200 into an account, whether that's your health savings account, whether that is, there's a new account type called a lifestyle spending account, and you can just put money in and say you can use this for gym memberships or tie whatever criteria you want towards that incentive. That is a safer bet than the premium differential with the lay of the land right now. We're not sure if, it's going case by case as far as if an employer is going to be held in violation.
And that's like, that's a recurring conversation in the United States with lots of things, right? Like, it's my body, it's, okay, but you also impact a collective, right? So that's, man, that's like lots of topics. But I love that, as far as like, we're not going to force you to.
We can make it highly attractive and show you that we care because we do. We want you to be healthy and productive and have a great life. By the way, if you catch us early, we will all pay less, so.
But it seems like we have to have some solution, as important as it is for people to get things caught early. It seems like what we wouldn't want to do is not do any thoughtfulness around that.
Okay. Okay. So moving into the busy, busy numbers, oh, actually, we've got one good one. Page nine. I just want to show you this page quickly because from the time that you went self-insured, something that's not on this page is when the district was fully insured, there were several years of double-digit rate increases, 20%, 30% rate increases that were to be battled. And so the decision was made, let's, let's bring this as, let's be a self-insured plan so that on the years that we perform well, we stock that money away into our reserve rather than United Healthcare, Blue Cross, or making more money. Right? That's, that's the concept. So you have performed well over the years and have been able to build up a reserve. But on certain years, you did have an increase. So the board increased by 5% in 2014. The employees saw a 2.8% increase in their premiums. And as you go down, you can see that there were several years of no increase. Now we're hitting, getting hit with a 16% underfunded and a, or I'm sorry, a 10% underfunded for this year and 16% for next year. So the conversations between, I think Cabinet and Patty would attest to this, is perhaps we start looking at not having those years with no increase, and we take baby steps year over year as a best practice. I do have clients that do that. Of course, it's wonderful. We love to have no increase. It's, it's one less thing to worry about in an ever-increasingly expensive world. But if you just have a 2% increase a year, or 1.5% increase a year, maybe you don't have a 16% hole that you're trying to dig yourself out of. So I just think it's important to show all the years of no increase and then also show you the bad news for this year. So.
Nice to see some good news.
One page. All right. So, and I don't think any of this is a laughing matter, but you have to make light of numbers sometimes. So on page 10, to talk you through the setup of this page, we're looking at your 24-25 renewal in every column outside of the gray header. So you see 23-24, where it shows 6694 for employee only. That is your current employee contributions for the HSA plan. And then as you go down that same column, you'll see what the employee is paying if they choose the standard plan or the premium plan per tier. And this is per month, the employee portion of the premium. At the very bottom of that column, you'll see 56211. That's the board's contribution. For anyone that takes the health insurance, regardless of which tier or plan, you pay 56211 for that person's coverage. And then they just pay the difference if they want to add dependence or change plans. The bottom, or right under that 56211, shows the annual board contribution. So for 23-24, the board contributes 8.9 million. And then as you go across the 5%, the 10%, the 15% columns that are reflected at the top, you'll see we've had a 5% increase for the board and a 5% increase for the employees in that column. And we're just trying to paint the picture of what different options would look like. Historically, the board has not increased more than 5%. There were a couple of years where the employees saw a higher increase than that. So I'm just putting the history back out there. For the 5% column, you can see the HSA plan, for example, employees would have for employee only, instead of paying $66, they would go up to 70. For that 10% column, you see that they would go up to $73 per pay, or per month. And then on that same line item where we saw the 56211 for the board, a 5% increase for the board would be $590 per employee that takes the plan. And then 10% would be 618. So if you're following across how it's set up. So the annual board contribution is that final line item before we get to the no health center and Everside health center at the bottom. So you can see a 5% lift to the board's funding, just doing 59022 times headcount, times 12, is 9.4, just under 9.4 million. Or a 10% increase would be about 9.8 million. For every 5%, it's about $440,000 if I'm going by memory correctly. So by 10%, you're about $880,000 increase for the board.
And this comes out of our reserve fund, anything that we're paying?
No. So that, that's a great question. So if the board increases by anything, that comes out of your general fund.
I think that's maybe what I, can you tell me, what is the difference in the terminology I am using? Because to me, like, the general fund plays into our reserve.
Good afternoon, board members. The general fund is the operating fund, which is what you want to protect most.
Yeah.
It is what pays all of our bills and our salary and benefits. So although the self-insurance piece, for the most part, is paid out of the self-insurance fund, any contributions that the board contributes is a direct hit to the expenses of the general fund.
Okay, so something we've talked about in the past is that 5% to 8% guidance that a previous board gave Cabinet, right? Like, we don't want to go below 5. Okay, so that 5% to 8%, is that called the general fund?
Yes.
Okay, and that, so I think that's what I'm thinking. My understanding is every, every about million dollars represents about a percentage of our, right? So, so what kind of gets confusing to me is that, that 5% to 8%, it always kind of feels like, well, it, we're going to maybe end up over here, it's, because it's so complex with like state funding, and it's not like my household budget. We're like, this is what my, I have in my savings account today. So as a board member, again, forgive me, but at some point, I'm going to need to figure out, like, just what can we afford if we want to stay within that 5% to 8%, knowing, what was it, an electric bill? What was, what was it that we were hit with that was like way higher?
The electricity, FPL, we had a huge unplanned for hit, and we didn't know until, I want to say, the same time last year.
Because healthcare is not the only thing that the district has to pay for. So I mean, as we're going through this, I just, I think I'm going to need a lot of hand-holding of, like, what does this mean?
I don't mean to interrupt, because I just wanted to add one more clar, I just wanted to make sure we clarified, because I just wanted to make sure we're all on the same page. So when we're talking about reserves, when you're speaking about reserve, you're speaking about the reserves in.
The health fund.
That's what I was going to clarify.
Right, which is, right, which is different.
So we're really not spending general fund.
Right.
No, but we are if, for this, right?
If we overshoot our budget, we are.
We're basically supplementing out of our general fund, is what the ad is.
But in this chart, you're talking about reserve.
Let's make sure we are on the same page as you have, you have asked. Any contribution that the board gives comes from our general fund, as we all know general fund to be. Any contribution that the board gives, 5, 10, 100, it comes out of our general fund.
And just, and I, to me, that's one of the things that I think is most important for a school board to oversee because a school board to oversee because what we have, at least what I've been taught since elected, is, you know, these, if you dip below a certain amount, then the state gets involved. Like, it can be really bad for a district if we find ourselves of not having, so I mean, I think I, I'm hoping that I'm understanding this correctly. It's what we would be contributing.
Let's let Superintendent Moore finish her thought, just because she was, she was in the middle of explaining that.
Yeah.
So we're on the same page.
Yes. So today, what we're going over is a lot of information. Some of it applies to our reserve for our self-insurance fund. Some of it, as we're talking about this portion specifically here, board contribution comes of our, out of our general fund. To your point, Ms. Hunt, this is, these are two portions in the entire picture. And so in two weeks, Ms. Womack is coming back to you again as, with a presentation on where we are financially, so that we are not just looking at these two pieces, we're looking at these two pieces and other pieces that directly impact our general fund dollars.
So if we, so these, if we had an increase here to contribution, it would have to be budgeted. If it, if we didn't, if it was not budgeted, then it was outside of, that's what would eventually hit our, our general account reserves because there's no, there isn't money in the budget. So we still have to about, work the budget out to see where this is all going to be.
Which is to Superintendent Moore's point, that is what will come to us two weeks. We're not making a decision today, it's just information. But I, and I understand there's lots of questions and I invite anyone to meet with me personally in my office whenever you need. I mean, there's going to be a lot of questions going forward.
Your recap was absolutely wrong.
And is there anything else? Did that answer everybody's, like, just immediate questions? Okay, great. So I know there's going to be more, let's just move on to the fore.
Thank you. At the bottom quarter of your page, you'll see a horizontal area that says no health center. So here, we're just showing you what your costs will be. If the board increases and the employees increase by 5%, you would have a unfunded liability of 2.4 million. And what that constitutes is what you're short on this year plus what the increases for next year. So we're short 1.2 million for this year plus the 1.8 million for next year. That gets us to the unfunded liability plus you gave an extra 5% so that gave us a little bit more. Your current reserve as of the 1/12/08, I meant to change that to as of August 31st. So every year, we have to do a filing with the Office of Insurance Regulation, that's part of Florida Statute 1/12/08. For any self-funded plan, you have to maintain a reserve of at least 60 days of claims. So what we're tracking here is are you compliant with that? And what happens if you're not compliant with that? What if you don't have that money sitting in your health insurance reserve? Well, then you have to supplement your filing with the state with a letter that says, we don't have this in this fund, but we have it in this fund. That's a requirement of the state. And I have had a client that's had to do that twice. The, it's not an ideal situation, though. And so the point of the last 10 years has been to build up that reserve so we can do something with it, right? So this, this is, you have 4.7 in the reserve. We would spend it down by 2.4 million. You would have 2.2 million left in that reserve, which is just above the 60-day requirement of 2.248. So you squeak by by $4,700. If the board were to increase by 10% and the employees were to increase by 10%, that becomes a more comfortable number of 595,000, beating the safe harbor by 595,000. So you'd have 2.8 million in the reserve. You only need to have 2.2 million. And then at 15%, of course, that becomes a much better picture on this line, but not for other pieces of your budget. 3.4 million estimated reserve, which gives you over 1.18 million. The only thing that is not accounted for in any of this is one of the methods that we use to replenish your reserve and the reason that you see a green at the end of your budget reports is you do get pharmacy rebates that are paid. Those are, anytime somebody goes and fills a brand-new medication or a specialty medication, we've negotiated special rates with your pharmacy benefit manager through RX Benefits to where there's a guarantee per prescription amount that comes back every quarter. And over the last four quarter, or after the last four payments, so a full year's worth of payments, it's been about a million dollars. And so you could look at this as, okay, we would have, under this scenario, 595,000 plus, plus really a million if things come to fruition as they have in the last four quarters. We don't use those in our funding projections for a reason. We don't want to count on that money in case your drug mix changes or something else changes, but just know that is a moving part that's not accounted for on this page. On the bottom, you'll see the Everside Health On-Site Health Center. And really, these numbers all just include the 1.1 million required to establish the health center minus the 521,000 claim savings attributable that first year of the health center. And so that's all in year one costs are of course going to make it more expensive under that scenario. So you can see even at the 10% mark, when we do not factor in the million dollars or whatever it comes to be for rebates, you're still about $167,000 short of meeting the reserve requirement under 1/12/08. So this is a lot of data and there's pages and pages that break out what the board versus employee is per tier and per plan, but this is really a good snapshot of all of it. I know that we've had one-on-ones to go through this because it's dense material, but is there any question that I can answer for the board on this page?
So that last Everside On-Site Health Center, is it 10% increase, that third column?
So on the third column, if the board increases your $562 to.
15%. Third column. Where it says 1, 1.9 million.
Oh, that's the 15%.
That's 15.
So that would be going, so it's, that's going across, so that would be up to 15% in that column.
And so it all comes kind of full circle to why we're having this conversation while we've also heard from Everside. So the way that we could look at this is there's an investment required to not be in this situation in the future. I know that some of the feedback is, can we, this is a hard question, can we, can we do it? We want to do it, can we do it? So this is the way that it all breaks down and we've taken into account every moving part we can without showing the rebate value on here. I thought that would be better just to explain to you.
And this is just a tough thing in that it's my understanding, the Everside option, really, it's a, it's a more of a long-term solution, right? But it's just kind of a real hit right now. Something that Superintendent Moore, we can talk about more, just the two of us, but this board has spent a lot of time talking about operational efficiency, right? Which is your side of, of the house, right? Certainly. But I think that's something that has come up a lot of, that money's tight. You know, do we, are there some positions that can be centralized? You know, are there, you know, is there a way that, you know, is there money to be found within operations that we can offset some of this? So I, this just, no, no, sorry. So this is just such a bigger conversation of, okay, we've got two years that if we want to see the long-term benefits of like the health center, we have two years that we have to find maybe some money somewhere else. But yeah, it'll be Patty's, like Patty's the all-star in this and like helping us figure this out.
Which is why our next presentation in two weeks is going to be huge. And we have been having those conversations with our building and department leaders around changes that we're going to have to make. Again, this is, these are two pieces to a lot of other things that are coming. But I think that the question of can we afford it is not one that we should be asking or looking at right at this moment. We have to look at it as we get more information. And I have not said this to Danielle before, so she may say, absolutely, that's wrong. LaShaka, don't say that again. But I think that the, you know, some people may think, well, why in the world would we be talking about a clinic now? But the way I am looking at and learning about the clinic is that the clinic is almost like another stop-loss for us. And or, because what we can't do is, we can't afford for our claims to continue at the rate that they are going. And so regardless of what, we're going to have to do something. And as the board gets all of the information, you will make a determination if it will be the clinic or something else, but we, we can't continue at the rate that we're currently going or we're going to price ourselves out to the fact that we can't offer competitive, high-quality benefits to our staff.
Yeah, I think the coming decision really in our next review of this is, one, are we going to just increase, or increase the, the participation on our side and the employee side on its own and not add a clinic? Or are we going to invest in a clinic for the future and to hopefully, to reduce cost in the future? But we have to definitely take into account, is this the year to take, to make that large investment based on our current financials? And that, that's when our next meeting, Patty's going to bring those numbers forward to see if it's worth the risk because it is all about participation. If we don't have participation in the clinic, it doesn't produce the savings. So we have to, and we have to make sure, we're going to put this money up front now in hopes that, just like in any venture or business or in an effort, there's an upfront investment and you're hoping that it pays off in the end. So these are things to consider for our next meeting.
How much promotion did we do this year of our own clinic? Because if the utilization rate was higher of our own clinic, then our rates may not be as high. Is that correct?
That model is not, is it, you, go ahead and speak to the clinic model. No, I, there was two things I was going to answer there. One, no, there has not been a huge push for the Advent Clinic because there's been some, some frustration amongst the population and kind of a morale problem with trying to get in and having just technical issues and just communication gaps. But it's not the same model. And so the Advent does a great job. That was my primary care before my doctor retired. They don't have the time to spend 30 minutes with a patient to talk to them about what all is going on with their social determinants of health and making sure that they're having all the follow-up care and having somebody reach out to them to make sure they're having that follow-up care.
And the model we have.
It's, yeah.
Current model.
Yeah, and any doctor's office. So what you're doing now is you're, you're funneling everyone to one doctor's office. And while they do a great job and provide excellent patient care from the feedback of the patients that go there, it's not the same model of population health that actually lowers your costs. So while we may see a, if you fill up every single appointment slot with Advent, you're going to save about $120 in claims per person that comes in to that health center. But you'd have to have a lot of those to equal the amount that we're paying in a fixed fee to Advent. That's why we're counting it as a wash because I don't think that the volume is necessarily there to drive that, that savings.
And when we had our one-on-one meeting, that was one of my biggest struggles was that we don't have the data participation at Advent. Because if we knew, like you said, Duncan, that we already had 37, which is, which is kind of like the starting point that they.
Know it would be guaranteed almost.
We know, okay, we're, it's likely that we'll, especially if we're going to provide something better, we might get more. So that's the hard hurdle to get over is going into this blind without knowing how much participation we have now. So if there was ways to back into that number somehow through some other way of calculation, that would be helpful.
And we can bring at the next meeting what the data that we, that we do have, because we do receive data from Advent. I think we, we also have to look at it, from my understanding, please correct me, Danielle, if I'm wrong, is that if we were to go in the route of a health center, it would not be, it's not just about the volume of people that are going, but it really is care management with individuals to make sure that their care is being connected, is not, is not, there's not breaks in care so that we can control the amount of.
The more expensive.
The more expensive care that. And they will still get that level of care, but making sure that they're, they're not breaks in.
So does that model, I'm sorry to interrupt. So does that health center model depend on people leaving their primary?
No.
Okay. Because I was viewing it more like an urgent care.
Yeah. So that's a really good point. We've looked at how many of your members don't have an established relationship with primary care. And I think the last that we looked at was over 60% do not have a primary care doctor.
So those are the people who would grab, who would want to grab.
That was shocking, isn't it?
And there's two reasons for that.
60%?
It's harder to get in with an established primary care physician. I know there's a six-month wait for new patients in Ormond right now for the ones that people really want to go to that have great reputations. And it's also a convenience factor. It's like, I just keep putting it off. I need assistance to make my appointment to do my wellness.
Wow. 60%.
Yep.
Do districts ever have, something I've just been thinking about now for months, is like a district wellness officer that would fall under like HR. Like, do districts have? I, the other day when I went to a rimfire staff meeting and like, there was so much, I don't want to be gross, lots of coughing, lots of sniffling, okay? And I was just thinking, like, health and wellness is such a big part of a school district. Like, who in the district today really with passion owns that? And if we don't have anybody, is it worth the spend to have somebody? Because 60% not having a primary.
Typically, that person would sit under the HR office umbrella and that would be part of their 40-hour work week or group size. To have a dedicated, full-time person to manage the wellness program, I don't think you're big enough for that to justify it.
But some, but some bigger districts do.
Yeah.
And we did just join a coalition this year of other districts that don't necessarily have a dedicated person, but same thing, they might have some benefit specialists. And so we're just dabbling into that now and getting to be a part of that.
That just seems like, again, operations, but that just seems like something that would be really important. Can I just ask a quick question on this? When we talk about a percentage, that is a fixed cost regardless if I'm making $15 an hour, so maybe I'm making 27 to 30 a year versus I'm making 70 a year. As we're having this whole conversation, where I, my big concern is certainly for everybody, their healthcare costs, but especially for the non-instructional staff who we do not function without, right? So I think we probably already have employees who are not getting a paycheck today, like every single dollar of their.
If they have family coverage.
If they have family coverage, which we, we have families, it's how life continues. So again, are there districts that do anything by way of, I'm not trying to get too, whatever my word is of, I don't know my word is.
A different contribution structure?
Yeah. Like, is there, do any of the districts do anything to make sure that our lower-paid non-instructional staff, we can hire them and they can function?
Yeah. So that, that's a good question. And I don't have any district clients that do this, but I have some law firms, for example, that do this. They'll structure it based on salary band or employee classification. I also have a university client that does this. So if you make under $42,000 a year, we subsidize your coverage to where you're never going to pay more than 6% of your, your income per month. But that's for employee only. I don't have any that do that for family.
If I have a family.
The law firm that I was talking about that structures it by payment, it is, we pay a higher percentage of that total premium for our associates and staff versus a partner, for example. What Platter Schools has done historically, and I, this goes way before us working with you all, the, the district's contribution, the board contribution is based on a defined amount. So what the employee chooses to do with that, buy up to family coverage, choose other plans, that is a defined contribution. I have other clients that do a percentage of total cost. So rather than paying 90% of the employee only, you might pay 80% of the employee only and 50% of any dependent coverage. It's just a different model. However, it becomes really difficult to adjust that whenever you're already budgeting based on a fixed cost. So there's, there's a reason that the district has done it based on fixed costs.
And I would lean on Bob, right? I mean, he's got the pulse on how well we're able to attract and retain. And I just want to make sure that needs to be part of the conversation, that it's a part of the conversation.
I think everything, you look at the numbers we have, everything that, that we do and don't do is a part of the conversation at this point. You know, the numbers speak for themselves as far as, you know, percentages. And so, I mean, I don't think there's anything wrong with having discussions about all the different aspects of our healthcare.
We have had individuals turn down our offer once they've seen our, our benefits package.
Well, because if I can go work at, a lot of times people talk about Buc-E's, right? Like, if I can go to Buc-E's and be behind a counter and get.
Healthcare.
Get better healthcare, like, and I can actually have a paycheck. So I just, it all goes back to, and we, we don't function without paraprofessionals, is an example. And we don't function without our food, with any, with, yeah, with anybody who we need, right? Our truck drivers. And so again, again, it's another puzzle to, you know, put together.
Yeah. Just a couple of things. Health insurance is not going to decline in costs. Health insurance is not going to decline in costs. So what we can buy today is going to be less expensive than what we can buy tomorrow. And that's the bottom line. That is not going to change. So if we, you know, decide that we love Everside and we want to do that, it's going to be less expensive today than it would be next, the next time we look at it again. That's number one. Number two, I had the opportunity and I took the advantage of speaking to some insurance committee members and union members. And they really want the Everside. And I'm thinking, okay, convince me, why do we need the Everside? Which makes sense. I want to hear what their thoughts are. And right off the bat, they started spilling off the fact that we have very few, we have a lot of people that don't have primary doctors. So when they get sick, they go to either urgent care or the emergency room. And that's where a lot of your fees and your costs just shoot off the wall. And that's where this Everside clinic would be very helpful. And I think, you know, knowing that that's what they requested when we met virtually, you know, I said, what do we need to do to make this work? First of all, the limit we can do at this point is, is 10%. We've always done five if we had any and we let them carry, but 10% is the least amount we could do to kind of make our bottom line. You can see where that's going to take us with our reserve. We have to have the 60 days in that reserve. It's as simple as that. And we want to keep as close to that 60 days as we can. And that's, we just make it. We just make it with that 10%. You know, I know a lot of people say, well, it's 16%. Why aren't we doing eight and they're doing eight? Because it's not going to work. We have to get up to that 10%. That's why. You know, or why are we, are we doing a small amount?
Let's be careful what we say.
Or why are we doing a small amount or why are we moving, you know?
No, I know.
There's all different ways to look at that.
Right. I think we have to be careful with what we say right now.
Oh, absolutely. So we don't know what we're doing.
No, we don't.
What I'm saying, that, that is, these are the things we have to do.
This is all informational and, and you know, bargaining will come at some point, but.
But that's, that's the request of the, of our, our employees.
And they'll bring that forward in bargaining.
Oh, they will.
Right. Right now, we're, we're just getting the information.
We're looking at the differences, right.
And just to be clear, that will go to insurance committee, not, this isn't bargained.
Yeah.
Right.
But there's one other issue, that, and that's the reserve. I think from the conversations I had, that the group was under the, the idea that not a problem, it's going to be all paid by the, by the insurance reserve.
There's not enough.
But that's not the case.
There's not even close to enough.
In reality, it's not the case.
But remember, your, your contribution regardless of what, always comes out the general. Your contribution comes out of the general.
Exactly, I was going to say. And our general's already below what we like it to keep.
Your contribution comes out of the general.
And we're already, but we're going to be taking losses. We're going to take, we're going to take a hit this year, which is going to take slower.
I think it's really difficult to have the conversation about what we have available until we have the budget meeting.
Right, I think that's, that's what we got to say.
So can we just get through this and finish what we have to finish?
Because we already, this is coming back. So everybody that has these great additions to this conversation, it just may not be the best time to get the answers we need. So I would like you to continue with your presentation.
The only other thing that I would take you through on, on these pages, and I'm not going to take you one by one, I'm just going to explain that as you go through each page, page 13, for example, on the top, you'll see in yellow what the scenario is on that page. So this is no health center, the board and the employees each assume a 5% increase. And then on the far right-hand side of that page, you'll see the impact to the employee per month. What does 5% mean for their tier and their plan and their contribution? So that, that's what that page is and they all flow just like that. And so.
That's very helpful.
The idea is to see how it's impacting the employees, right? What does 10% really mean? What does 15% really mean? And then what does that mean for the board? I will direct you to one other piece. The board column is under the 59022, the dark blue on that right-hand side. So you can see for every 5% increase in your funding, you would need to find $446,000. So at a 5% increase, the board needs to come up with that. 10%, it becomes eight, about 890, yeah.
And these scenarios go through a clinic and/or health center as well as no health center.
Correct. And it's all summarized on the page that's on the screen right now. So if you wanted to see really the nitty-gritty of what.
It really is very well done.
Thank you.
Laying out such a complicated proposal.
I have a fantastic former math teacher that puts this together for me.
Well, kudos to them.
I have to give Christina a huge shout-out.
I do have one general question, not necessarily specific to the numbers here, but more to the model that we offer. Now, there's other types of what's called medical reimbursement programs out there that aren't technically insurance, right? Has there ever been sort of a hybrid model of that? And the reason why I bring that up is because if you're in, if you're in a medical reimbursement, which again is not insurance, so there's not, there's not this certain guarantee behind it on its own. But when you go to the ER, you go to the doctor, you are a cash payer, right? And so when you go to the ER, they, they present you with a bill that might be 13, $1,500. But you get a cash price, you write then and there, you're going to only pay $350, the 500 for that visit, right? So then that medical reimbursement company that you participate in pays that lower amount and then, but they save, you know, 70% or more off of a claim because it's a cash person. Now, in this model, the, 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 the patient has to either one, pay that upfront out of their pocket, put it on their credit card, or work out a payment plan with the hospitals, which apparently they're willing to do if you can't pay it all right then. But then when, so then the, this company reimburses them that $300 and they can, if they did finance it or work out a payment, then they pay off that debt to the hospital, but it was a cash price and, and it was a huge savings of the 70%. So what if, excuse me, what if we could have a model where somehow that type of function was incentivized ultimately? Because obviously it exists and it's done every day. I've experienced it myself. But we're paying, so somebody goes to the ER, we're paying that 1,500 where if a cash payer could show up there and pay it right then and there, they, they're paying 70% less. So, so I mean, I know this is no secret. I mean, it's, that is out there known. Everybody's heard about the $8 Tylenol pill, you know, it's like just, but has that ever been done, is do some sort of a model like that?
So there's two things to consider there. One is the Affordable Care Act requires large employers, anyone with more than 50 employees, to offer valuable coverage at an affordable price or else you pay a penalty. That doesn't meet that qualification. So you'd be assessed about, I want to say it's 3,600 per employee for the penalty.
Essentially, they want, they want us to keep paying the high, high claims.
But to your point, there's, I have two more points for this. So your, and your example, $1,500 for that ER bill and because I have insurance, I'm paying $1,500. Well, no, you're not because now you have Blue Cross Insurance, you're only paying, you're getting a 60% discount off of whatever that amount was. But if you had United, you might only get a 50% or if you have EMT, you might only get a 40% depending on the area. So there's the negotiated price off of the Charge Master amount. What we're really wanting is to provide transparency in the market so that someone knows if I go to the hospital and have an MRI or I go to the radiology center, I can save 70% on that test since the same thing.
Right.
So that's really what we're trying to be promoting right now. When we come back for the next board meeting, we might have more to report on that. We need to have more transparency in the healthcare system in general, but empower the employees with a tool to do it, so.
But so we're paying Advent, or no, who's it, who's doing our, our claims?
Quantum Health and Blue Cross Web TPA.
Okay, so do we, do we negotiate, do they negotiate the claim? Do they, do they try and get us a lower amount?
So there's different models of that. So you do not have Florida Blue, you have Web TPA and that's by design. Web TPA is a more, they don't have as strict contracts wherein they can audit bills line by line if they exceed certain dollar amounts. So when I said we're going to be coming back to you in a couple of weeks, we're looking at a slightly different model with them wherein they would be auditing more of those claims to find more of the $8 Tylenols.
Okay, but I mean, necessarily, they're not necessarily doing anything wrong by billing the $8 Tylenol, but no one, I mean, potentially that's legal, right? I, I would imagine there must be some legality or they would be in big trouble for doing that. But are we just not asking for a better price on, on these claims?
The way that the contracts are written between hospital systems, doctors and insurance carriers prohibit a lot of that in the standard insurance contract. So United Healthcare is broadest network. Reason they have so many doctors and hospitals in the network, and I'm just using United as an example here, is because those contracts are more liberal favoring the providers and hospitals. That's why they're, okay, I'll join that one. The more restrictive networks come with more things that you have to be accountable for and so you have fewer doctors and hospitals that join the network, which leads to disruption within the population. And so there's a balancing act between finding the right TPA and network and providing adequate access to your employees. And so that's something that I'm constantly exploring for you and my clients.
Can I just share, Patty, I don't know if you were able to look at that. We were talking about this when this happened several years ago. We had a insurance proposal that the rates were off the charts. And we got the claims about the same time, maybe January, but we hadn't gotten the rest of the year. So if the rest of the year shows to be on the positive side, then the premiums go down. So we waited, till when did we wait?
I want to, it was at least June, it was at least a couple of months, June, possibly three.
I think June, June, because we had to make a decision, I think in July. And so we waited to see, if you go back to the beginning of the presentation where all of the red boxes and the blue, green, green boxes. Because, I mean, really from here, from January to June, we don't know if it's going to be in the red or if it's going to be in the green, so.
Right, we could trend back downward is what you're saying.
Right, right. We could trend down and the rates then would, would be adjusted and changed.
And that is what, that's what happened in that year and it was in our favor. I can't remember the actual month we started, but we did just start watching each month. In full transparency, I believe this information is through December. I can tell you that our January, which we get real time as we pay it, is, is very high. It's a million dollars of claims for the month of January, which is, which is high. Not to say that it's going to go back down, it could very much so, we can't predict it. But that is a strategic method that could be looked at. Keep in mind, on the flip side, every month you wait, that could potentially have a direct impact on open enrollment for our staff. So it's almost like weighing, weighing that timeline as to what's the best option.
So I just wanted to share that just from a historical perspective because it did benefit us, our premiums did go down.
I, I would also assume our stop loss is going to go up, cost for our stop loss insurance.
That's negotiated at the end of the year.
Yeah, I think, yeah.
We won't be able to lock that in until about 60 to 90 days before your 91 renewal. So we put in a conservative assumption there, I think of 30% for an increase for stop loss. It depends how many people use the stop loss, right? They don't care if you've got a bunch right under the stop loss.
Right, it's above, right.
So like quick rando thing, forgive me, but while you're here and Dr. Conklin is here, are there any like outside the box options? I'm going to be cheesy for a second, it's what I do. If I'm a charter school, it's my understanding the charter company owns the real estate, right? Like I can take the state funding, and then the charter school dissolves and I still own the building.
Yes.
Okay, so follow my logic. Is there a creative solution? Because it sounds like if we do the clinic, we, that comes out of our self-funded pot of money. Is there, I'm not trying to be, turning to Laney's probably going to explode. Is there like, hey, we're using capital dollars to build career and technical ed medical space, right? Using those dollars. Meanwhile, we know at some point, we're going to use it really for our clinic.
So whenever we start doing this.
Like, is that, no.
Let it out of the bag.
No, no. Like, and I get it, and I get it, and what else, like, I'm not asking to do anything that's not like, you know, above board, but like are there, like.
But there may be creative ways.
But are there creative ways to grab like monies from other places where we have, like capital dollars or, I, I just, it's like, we, we need to find a way to make this work.
We're looking at everything.
So what, so that would be just my other ask is, are there, and, and can I just say this? When we went to Tampa, when we were first, the three of us at least were first elected and I think we were all there. And the, one of the accountants, one of the CFOs from another district came up and, and they, they talked about things like that. Like there are these kind of creative solutions that some districts will do.
Legal solutions.
Always.
Of course.
Always creative legal solutions of like investing over here because you get some kind of like a tax benefit and then that. So I, I think that's just what comes to mind, like, because this is tough. This is like going to be a tough thing for us to figure out.
It is. And as superintendent of staff, it is, it is, this is double digits of how many times we've had this conversation with cabinet and with our consultants. There are many things that we have talked about and this is, when we kind of will pull this all together in a few weeks. Because there are, and works more in everything.
We are taking trips and visiting other counties, other districts, looking, having conversations with them.
Good.
Those who are doing well, we, we are literally getting in the car, going and sitting with them and asking.
One of the people are doing.
We have a trip planned on Monday.
Yeah, we have, Monday, we're going on a, on another road trip to sick.
You know what worked, I don't know if worries me is the right word, but concerns, is that I, I remember talking about when we were doing the Advent piece, if our people use it, if our people use it, it'll be, the rates will be lower if our people use it. We don't know if our people are using it, right? But how do we know that's not going to be the same scenario? And we're going to invest all of this money, our rates are going to be lower if people use it and then our rates are not lower.
It's definitely a risk, absolutely.
But to me, it doesn't have to be a risk and that's why, I don't mean to be a broken record, but we keep, that's why I keep bringing up, like, does there need to be a policy change? Again, I don't know how this works with bargaining, but if we have employees that, who can use sick time to go to the doctor, but I'm not incentivized to use that sick time because I get to bank 100% of it. I, I agree with you and that's my concern, but can we do something as a board to have that, whether it's a stick or a carrot, to make sure that it's being utilized?
Yeah, I, I didn't realize, like I was very curious to hear that some customers utilize, basically require every single user to go through their clinic.
Health risk assessment.
But only in the cheap plan, like they, they had the option, if they want to pay more, they don't have to do it, right? So it was, but it was.
No, it sounds like it was everybody in the plan.
It was, in order to not pay a lot more in your premiums, you have to come in and have your health risk assessment and a follow-up appointment.
See, I, why can't we do something like that?
You, you could, because there's still a compliance gray area. You could say it was a good faith effort with the information that we have. You're going to pay less if you do that comprehensive health review. I have a city client that still does that. They, I think it's only a $25 a month savings, but it's still, most of their people do it. And they have a time period where you have to go in and have that health review or you don't get the incentive and you pay more in your premiums.
Just interesting, I didn't know that.
Oh, I was just saying, but the people weren't forced, they had, they had options. It's just that was the most affordable option if you chose to use the, the health center, right?
And they also made it to where a primary care visit, and this is where it's like, do we really want to disrupt those that have an established primary care relationship, right? But what they did was, there wasn't a co-pay for primary care. It was you have to meet a deductible of, let's look at your high deductible health line, $2,000. Until you've reached that, you're paying the full cost of that office visit, which is $100 to $200 depending on where your primary care is. So that's, that was the incentive. It wasn't that they didn't have the option, they were just going to pay a lot more for that visit outside of the center.
So that's what I'm going to say, because we don't want to have people forced that So that's what I'm saying, because we don't want to have people forced that they're going to have. They have other options in these scenarios. It's not just like you have one plan for a one-size-fits-all. Somebody might be willing to pay more because they see value in whatever that plan offers, right?
And to wrap up our conversation, we will be sending out an email today to all of our faculty and staff, letting them know the individuals who are on the insurance committee, as well as that they can reach out to you to express, you know, whatever their questions, concerns, or ideas are, as well as there will be a spot on our website where they can go on and give feedback as well.
Okay, all right. Thank you all for all the information.
You're welcome.
And we'll move on to our next agenda.
Thank you.
I know that was a lot of, really complicated.
Okay, so I just want to let the board know, we are at three forty PM and we are moving on to eight point oh one, Beltier Swim and Racquet Club, Joshua Walker.
And Mr. Freeman.
Oh, and Mr. Freeman, is that on my agenda? Welcome to both.
Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
So, this afternoon, we will be providing an update on the Beltier Swim and Racquet Club. Included in this presentation will be information on where we ended last fiscal year and where we are currently today. We will also be providing you with an update on current membership totals. So for starters, we'll be going on to page, or slide three, and we'll be looking at 2022-2023 financials. These are actuals where we ended last year. So, looking back at last year, the Beltier Swim and Racquet Club brought in a total of one hundred fifty-two thousand, two hundred and sixty-four dollars. Of that amount, twenty-five thousand dollars came from the county, seventy-two thousand, two hundred and fifty-two came from insurance, and fifty-five thousand, twelve dollars came from memberships and daily use. And then we'll all pause for questions at the end and we'll be able to go back through wherever you guys may have questions.
Okay.
All right, page four. Board, last year, the Beltier Swim and Racquet Club accrued three hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars of operating expenses. This slide contains a breakdown based on object code for what was spent. Please note that object code zero seven five oh is related to as-needed staff, such as lifeguards and gym attendants, and that during the twenty-two-twenty-three fiscal year, the minimum wage increased to fifteen dollars an hour, starting in October of 2022. Board, for the 2022-2023 fiscal year, the Beltier Swim and Racquet Club operated at a loss of one hundred eighty-two thousand, seven hundred and thirty-six dollars.
I'm sorry, where is the three thirty-five breakdown?
It is slide number four.
Okay, thank you.
And I'll be more than happy to go back in further detail once we.
I appreciate it.
Absolutely. So, looking ahead to where we currently are for the twenty-three-twenty-four fiscal year, this slide details what we have budgeted going into this current fiscal year. After making several changes to our membership options in November of 2023, we have budgeted club revenue at a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, plus an additional twenty-five thousand dollars from the county, putting our budgeted total revenue at a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. And that is on, yeah, perfect. So when you take a look at that, and then you look at our budgeted operating expenses, which we'll go in more detail in a moment, at three hundred and fifty-one thousand, seven hundred and fifty-eight dollars, we're looking at a projected or even a budgeted loss of a hundred and seventy-six thousand, seven hundred and fifty-eight dollars.
Are the county commissioners already committed to that twenty-five thousand?
Correct, we have not been given notification for this year. So we are expecting that twenty-five thousand for this fiscal year. Board, on this slide, we go into detail from July one, twenty twenty-three, through January thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. This is our actual revenue year-to-date. We have brought in a total revenue of eighty-two thousand, thirty-six dollars. Of that amount, forty-two thousand, six hundred and twelve dollars is from membership and daily use, and thirty-nine thousand, four hundred and twenty-four dollars is from insurance providers. We typically receive the twenty-five thousand dollars from the county towards the end of the year. It has not been received as of yet. And we'll go to the next slide. Board, on this slide, this is the, in detail, the Beltier Swim and Racquet Club operating expenses broken down by budgeted amount versus actual year-to-date spend through January thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. So in one column, you'll see what we budgeted going into this year, and then the next column is what we have spent as of January thirty-first. Our biggest increase from last year's budget is code zero seven five oh for other personal services, as we now have had twelve months of paying as-needed employees fifteen dollars an hour, compared to nine months last fiscal year. We are also experiencing an increase in pool chemicals. For instance, chlorine was previously one dollar and ninety-one cents a gallon, but now it's up to two dollars and sixty-eight cents a gallon. So that's an example of the rising cost to operate the facility. And at this point, what I'm going to do is we are going to transition into looking at our membership totals and where we stand today. But before we do that, on slide ten, I do want to highlight what we've been doing to advertise the Beltier Swim and Racquet Club. So, Board, this slide details the various efforts we've made throughout the past year to advertise the property and the facility. I would like to highlight that, starting this week, for instance, we are actually going to be running an ad in the Palm Coast Observer that will be running twice a month from this week through summertime. So if you look on this slide here, we've participated in a home and lifestyle show, which we partnered with FTC four. We also, through Flagler Radio, we advertised our summer open house weekend this past year, which was very successful. And we also participated in advertising through Mitten Magazine at the end of last calendar year. You may have saw the clippings, we were able to do various coupons and things of that nature, as well as doing online marketing and other community events, such as the Senior Health and Wellness Expo, which was held at the VFW back in August. We'll go ahead and move forward with slide eleven and slide twelve as we look at our membership detailed breakdown. Board, as of January thirty-first of this year, the Beltier Swim and Racquet Club has one thousand and two members, shown here by type. The next two slides will break down those categories, we'll get into detail. But before moving on, I would like to highlight that we currently have seventy-one members that are under an insurance plan that have opted to add the Aquatic Plus access, which gains additional access to the pool and the sauna, in addition to our basic membership offerings. And then when we go to slide thirteen, what we're doing is we're looking at a breakdown for our basic membership type. So for instance, this membership total looks like for our basic membership for just the gym and tennis courts. Note that we have seven hundred and forty-eight members sign up for the basic membership. So, or basic membership for insurance, which means we still get, we still generate revenue on a per-use model for it. But we're hopeful as weather starts to get a little bit better, as we head towards the summer, we'll be able to convert more and more of that seven forty-eight to a Aquatic Plus membership. So it's broken down here based on length, membership type, cost, and total memberships. And then on the flip side, on slide fourteen, we have it broken down for Aquatic Plus, which is access to the entire facility. And I wanted to make note here on the bottom, we do still carry grandfathered memberships. So before we enacted the board-approved rate changes and structure, we still have people that, hey, they already had an annual membership that was effective twelve months from the date that they purchased it. So we're still honoring those memberships. So that's the eighty-eight you see on the bottom. And then just as a reminder, how we structure our annual memberships is it's twelve months from the date of purchase. We don't prorate it or just end it for the fiscal year, it's twelve months from date of purchase. So this is broken down. And you can see we have a lot of different categories and different types. It was in an effort to provide as many options to our community as possible, as we look to bolster revenue. Now, Board, something we wanted to share with you is, here is another breakdown by object code of what it would possibly look like for covering operating expenses at the Beltier Swim and Racquet Club if we did not sell memberships. For instance, if we, if the board chose to utilize this for, you know, either student use only or without memberships, is the way we're explaining it. So, we've had this conversation previously, and with the feedback we've gotten from the board, we believe this is a fair estimate of at most what it would cost if we were just operating it separate from memberships. So we did include in this slide a forty thousand dollar estimate for an, for a full-time employee. And the asterisks are to let you know that that forty thousand is the estimate lumped in with retirement, social security, insurance, and all of that. So that was the number we are using to replicator, project one full-time person there. Also, I do want to note that when the topic came up about lifeguards and what could that possibly look like with the facility, just to give you an idea or a ballpark, we budgeted fifteen thousand, six hundred dollars. That gives you one lifeguard working twenty hours a week throughout the year. Now, of course, it can fluctuate based on time and things like that. If we were renting out the facility, that cost would be incurred by the renter. So, and we can always circle back to this slide as well. And on slide sixteen, Board, looking ahead, we have two benchmarks listed for your consideration for identifying what success looks like for the Beltier Swim and Racquet Club. The first benchmark listed would be breaking even on operational costs, which we have listed at three hundred and fifty-one thousand, seven hundred and fifty-eight dollars. So that essentially would be the revenue goal we would have to meet to break even on operational costs. Now, our second note is breaking even on operational costs minus the amount estimated it would take to operate the facility without memberships. That was the breakdown I showed on the previous slide, estimating a hundred and thirty-six thousand, one hundred dollars for that expense estimate. Which, with that benchmark, would provide a revenue goal of two hundred and fifteen thousand, six hundred and fifty-eight dollars, which would essentially mean to have memberships, that would wipe out the cost or the expense.
So how would you generate revenue?
So, that, for number two?
Yeah, because you're not doing memberships.
No, this is what we're looking at. So if we were to continue operations, Board, we would need to know, what does success look like? Is that continuing the operations as of right now, with the goal in mind that for this to be a success, we have to break even on operational costs? Or acknowledging that whether or not we sell memberships, we're still estimating a cost of a hundred and thirty-six thousand? So it would be, would the Board want to attribute success as to breaking even on that difference?
What was the choice again last year that we were talking about, closing it to the public?
Last year, we explored some different options and presented you with those. For instance, like, community use, student use only. So we're like, the community use would be, we would potentially not sell memberships, but we would be available to rent it out to various community organizations or member-led groups. That was just one of the things that was kicked around.
So choice number one and choice number two were options, as well as the third choice would have been just for community members to be able to, as Mr. Walker has stated, like, rent out the facility.
That's number two?
No, so when we look at these two options here, when the Board made the determination in order to continue Beltier Swim and Racquet Club as is, the Board never identified what the benchmarks or criteria were. And so what Joshua is providing to you is, here are some options to consider. When you think of success as a Board, are you looking at number one? Are you looking at number two? Or are you looking at something completely different? So this is really just a talking point for you as a Board, because at the time that you as a Board made that determination, a criteria was not established. And we want to make sure that we know that we, or not just us, the community knows what the criteria is.
I just, I'm just trying to get clarification on number two. So it's talking about operational costs. But I still am not, so that would not be open to the community. That's without memberships.
No, both of these revenue benchmarks is what does success look like if we continued operations as is? So we're still selling memberships and doing things like that.
But it says right there, without memberships.
So if you look, so let's look at.
It's the incremental cost. If I'm going to have someone live in my home, and I'm like, you can come and live with me, as long as there's not any additional cost to my family. Like, you're paying me for the additional heat, the additional food, the whatever. So what we're basically saying is, when this Board decides to make a decision again, should this come up again, are we saying that the, our metrics, our benchmark is like, is there enough revenue for the totality of running back? Which, to me, that's a no. We're not, we're looking for the incremental cost of running memberships. So number two would be, or are we just saying, listen, this is not what we're in the business for, we're in the business of education, but we will maintain this for the community so long as you are, it's paying for itself, right? And what we're saying is, it's costing this district an additional two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars to offer this to the community. So we're saying, we'll continue to run this. If it is separately, separate from our limited funding, it's bringing in two hundred and fifteen thousand. To me, number one is almost irrelevant, because I don't know why that, we would ever expect the community to fund our swim team. You know what I mean, having a pool for our swim team.
So, but, okay, let's just, this is an area where the reconciliation at the end would be better to see, you know, side-by-side comparisons. But if I'm going back through the slides and I see number seven, which it shows projected loss twenty-three, twenty-four is one seventy-six, seven fifty-eight, with all revenues and expenses, right? Am I correct? Then you go down to slide fifteen, and it says, the costs there are one thirty-six, one hundred dollars. So that is operating it without a membership, right? So, right now, and that assumes, that number does not calculate in any other rental revenues, correct?
Correct.
So, like, are the sinker bells and the flacker fluids and everybody else that leases the pool outside of the membership, that revenue is not factored into that, that loss? That's just a straight loss, no, okay, gotcha. So, I guess that the comparison is, okay, we continue to operate it as is with all in, outside renters, membership, membership revenue, you know, compared to the pool on its own, with everything, all revenues that we have already on the books, and without the membership, right? To me, that's kind of like the apples and apples comparison when it comes to the loss. Because right now, the gap is between that one seventy and change and one thirty-six right now, that's the difference. But if there are other revenues to this number, that difference is greater, the losses, the spread is greater. Do you see what I'm saying here? That's what I'm reading from this.
I do. Dr. Conklin was going to say something, but the, the cost to operate the facility right now is the three hundred thousand dollars. What Ms. Hunt is explaining is that the one hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars, that cost is going to be there regardless.
Yes.
So we will be taking that one hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars and taking it away from the overarching cost of the three hundred thousand dollars. And then that is what we would be looking and aiming to meet when it comes to the revenues that we're bringing in to say that Beltier Swim and Racquet Club is sustaining on its own.
Here's where I'm at. We have a lot of things coming down the pipe, which we all know. And this is not, this is not, we're not, you know, we're losing money here, and I don't think it's going to change. We still don't have the twenty-five thousand from the county commission. I am prepared to take action on this tonight. I just don't know what that action is, so.
And this is, it is not on the Board agenda for tonight, not that you, as a Board, cannot do anything with that, but it is not on, this is for, this is the timeline that was established back in August, so I can't remember the date. This is the timeline to say, we were going to provide an update at this time. That is all that this is for.
Because what I wanted to avoid is, what I wanted to avoid is, when this all came up last time, it was like, there were, there was a, there was disagreement about the numbers. You know, what is it really costing? There was this, and I think my ask this whole time was, if and when this comes up again to the Board, what are just the very clear goals that we have set to say? You know, so if it's brought up again, we can point very, it's no longer subjective. It is completely objective to say, this is what we established, like, because that was the conversation. Hey, if you guys can make enough revenue that you're not taking away from our goals of a school district, then yeah, of course, like, we'll do that for the community. But if we're objectively looking, and it's just not hitting that, and it's taking too much away. So, to me, we're not voting on it. It's really more for like, future, getting it established, what, how we are evaluating this.
Just to ask a question, I know I asked this in previous, where is the rental revenue? Where is the sinker bell rental revenue? Where is the rental revenue from the revenues?
We can send that out, I apologize.
Okay.
It is accounts, or.
Do you have any idea, a rough estimate?
I would say we generate usually about twelve hundred or so a month between sinker bells.
And the masters.
And masters, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that's important, that is part of the revenue of that facility.
So is that not factored in on the top side either? Is that factored in anywhere in here?
No.
No.
Because that's, that's part of the internal account, that's where that money goes, it goes into the internal.
Look, I know we've disagreed on this like a zillion times, but that money is basically, they're paying that facility to rent that space.
Yes.
Why in the world would we not consider that revenue for that space, for that program? I don't understand that.
But Josh, that, to me, that's where we need to get crystal clear, right? When I go to the example of, someone wants to come and live in my house, I have my overhead that's already established. It's like, what are you specifically costing me? It's like, what are you specifically costing me? And I think this board needs to see very specifically, so if there are people who are renting the facility, what are they costing us, right? Like, do they bring their own lifeguards? Do they bring their own staff to the mix? Like, are they costing us at the same percentage or the same amount?
Well, the cost are the, the costs are the costs, right?
But I think what you're, when I listen to Dr. Conlon, when I listen to what you're saying, I don't think that, I don't, I don't get this feeling that this board has ever really thought about, do we just shut down this facility completely? To me, that's a bigger conversation. If we were like voting on, do we just shut the whole thing down?
Yeah, I don't, that's never been a conversation.
That's never been a conversation. To me, it has to be crystal clear of when we are talking about having this as a membership facility, what specifically is that piece of it incrementally costing us? So I don't know if there's a way to figure that out. When you talk about like the other rental stuff, which we could do even if we did not have the membership program.
So like, for example, we whether, no matter what, let's say the synchrobells have the pool from three to four.
Yeah.
Two or three days a week, right? The operation of the facility is gonna be the operation of the facility regardless, right? That, everything that needs to be done is still gonna need to be done.
That basic fixed cost.
Right, right.
It's gonna cost us regardless of what, one hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars to operate the facility regardless of what. As far as the rental fees, this.
So this is what I'm saying, I'm sorry, Ms. Moore, I don't mean to interrupt you. But we're saying that the, right, the operation, basic is what, one hundred, say a hundred and forty thousand.
Okay, one hundred and forty.
If we look at the revenue that was generated, say, I'm looking at twenty-two, twenty-three, was a hundred and fifty-two thousand, because that's got the twenty-five thousand from the county. But it doesn't have the revenue from any of the rentals. It makes, it makes the budget.
So the revenue that is generated from any of, this is structured, just like all the rest of our other buildings are structured as well. As far as where the dollars go and how the dollars are utilized when our facilities are rented. So it's not that the team is doing something different with this facility. Now, for the point of this board, we can bring forward to you, here is how much the rentals cost. We earn in rental rentals here for this facility. We can absolutely bring that information forward to you, but I don't think that it changes the, it doesn't change the one hundred and thirty-six thousand and it doesn't change the three hundred thousand, right? So you as a board, as Ms. Hunt has stated, you as a board still have to make a determination of what your objective is. If your objective is that whatever the the bottom line is minus the one hundred and thirty-six thousand minus the rental costs, the the amount that we earn for rental, it should be this, it's 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 still the same. The three hundred thousand isn't gonna change, the one hundred and thirty-six thousand isn't gonna change.
I see what you're saying. So if the, out of the three hundred plus thousand, right?
Yes.
Take one hundred and thirty-six out of it.
Yes.
Completely out of it, because we're gonna spend it either or.
Yes.
And then whatever is left, say one sixty.
Yes.
We have to make one sixty to necessarily break even.
Absolutely.
So when I, when you say that, I'm looking at one fifty-two, pretty close, and that's without the rental revenue. It should, it should, it should be a wash.
Well, I'm just confused here because, okay, so we're saying that the difference, that the revenue that we have to bring in to break even with with the membership program in place is two hundred and fifteen thousand, six hundred and fifty-eight dollars. Is that what you're saying?
On slide sixteen.
Where is that number coming, two fifteen?
That's what I'm trying to get clarification on, so.
So.
Break even on operational costs minus the amount estimated.
Yes, so our operational costs are three hundred and fifty-one thousand, seven hundred and fifty-eight. If you minus the cost it would cost to run the facility anyway at one hundred and thirty-six thousand, one hundred, that's how we get the difference of two fifteen.
Okay, so where are our revenues right now?
Our revenues right now are listed.
All, well, right now, it's, this is only membership revenue that you have on here.
It's not rental and it's not the board accounting commissioner.
Use of facility is the only one that we do not have included on here.
Okay.
But if you go to slide eight, we have it detailed where we have received thirty-nine thousand, nine hundred and sixty-four from membership revenue, three thousand, six hundred and forty-eight from square, which is our daily use if they use a card. And then we have it broken down via insurance totaling up to thirty-nine thousand, four hundred and twenty-four for insurance.
And Will, that that's only till January thirty-first.
Right.
Correct, so that's on a seven month.
That's about eighty-two thousand.
Eighty-two thousand. So that's how much we've collected.
So, yes.
But then our projected is.
A hundred and seventy-five thousand.
A hundred and seventy-five thousand.
So when we start off the year and we budget, hey, what should our revenues look like? We look at what we've done historically. And then with the changes we enacted this fiscal year, we added an additional about twenty-five thousand to it to get to the one fifty for membership revenue. And then you account for the additional twenty-five thousand that's to us by the B O C C.
What's interesting to me here is that we've taken out the other revenues. And so that would say that we only have a forty thousand dollar gap.
That's what I, that's what I just came up with.
But last year, that gap was like a hundred, a hundred and seventy thousand. And then, but, and we didn't really, where did this, where did that change? I'm totally confused here. What changed? Because we, the difference in revenue is only the loss?
What's new seems to be the one thirty-six.
Yes, we're saying.
They're saying regardless of what happens, if we pull everybody out of there to just maintain the facility, it's gonna be a hundred and thirty-six thousand.
And I think last year, I can't remember the exact, it was like eighty thousand dollars.
Eighty something like that.
Yes, but when they, when you look at the fifteen dollar increase, when you look at the cost increase for the materials to operate the building from last year to this year is one hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars.
But that confuses me because I felt one of the points of conversation was that if we just use this for our swim team, it is in fact the labor that is costing us the most of that that was, that would almost be unnecessary. Because you said the coaches come, they're trained lifeguards, like maybe they pick up their own trash, like it, so I'm kind of confused why that's part of that.
I'll dive into, I think it's sixteen.
Because remember, in the one hundred and thirty-six thousand, because what, we don't want it to be said is that we are being unreasonable as to what it would cost to run the facility. So when you look at this cost, this is putting staff into the building. If we were to take it, I think, again, going back to our conversation this morning, that's one perspective of one board member. If we look at all the different board members, there's like, well, you're gonna have to have staff, you're gonna have to have this. So this one hundred and thirty-six thousand is inclusive of to have staff in there. So if we did not want to have staff included in there, we would, we would back out all of the costs, the zero, seven, five, zero for the cost there, the zero, one, six, zero, the cost there, and we would subtract that amount from the one thirty-six.
Well, as one board member, and thank you for for saying that, I'm even looking at, it's my understanding that Frida Zamba is unheated, correct?
No, it has, they're not heating it though. I think they were gonna, they have a heater, but it costs, it costs to heat a pool.
So they're, but so, we have, we have two swim teams. One is using Frida Zamba, one is using Bell Terr, right? So I'm just, is the one swim team using, that is using Frida Zamba, do they have a heated pool to practice?
So during, during high school swim season, it runs for approximately July through November.
They don't have.
It, by the time you get to the beginning part of November, that's when you have your high school, like the state meets and things like that. So by the first week in November, that's usually when we're turning our heater on anyway.
Okay, so.
So apples to apples.
So as this board member, I recognize I am one, I'm even looking at that, that I don't think if we had just our swim team using that facility, we would necessarily, I don't know what that heat cost is.
Yeah, so if you.
Eighty-five hundred.
But we're including the heat on here for if we rented it out or if the synchrobells are using it.
Because we would maybe not be able to get that.
The idea behind presenting this is if we, if the board chose to move in this direction, this is a conservative or it doesn't matter as far as the level, we anticipate shouldn't go over this amount. Now, you can look at this and go, well, we want to take away forty thousand, we don't want someone there. You know what? The board doesn't want to heat the pool. It's fine. You're saving eight thousand, five hundred there. Those are the types of things where the conversation would have to go another step.
But we don't want to present it as if it will cost this board zero dollars to.
No, to maintain.
No, we're saying to run it, it's gonna cost us a hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars. I think that that is extremely fair towards our community. Because if not, we could just, you know, we could say that we don't need staff to be in there, but that's not the case. If we're gonna have field trips or any of those things there, we would have to have staff.
So from an operational standpoint, you're saying that even if we did not do memberships, you would want to spend your operational dollars on having staff at that facility?
I'm saying that.
To me, that's your, like, that's your fault.
I'm saying that right now, based on our projection, it costs about a hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars to operate Bell Terrace Swim and Racquet Club.
So we're, so we're saying there's just a forty, there's a forty thousand dollar difference.
Well, but that's the thing, is that it just depends on what that, what that looks like. Because what I want to see as, as my view of this in comparison, is we left this off as we were either gonna go student focus, our comparisons were student-focused facility or membership. The only, but the big change was if the membership would go away, we would still have, we would just turn it into a student-focused facility. And then there was also the proposal, we would just eliminate the gym part of it because we don't need that, we wouldn't necessarily need that anymore. And we would still rent the pool out to through facility use. So that, that would be additional revenue, but our, our costs would go down because it would no longer be a staff daily and it would only be used when it's rented or it's being used by the school district for sports, right?
Which is why we're presenting it to you this way, because you as a board are gonna set what the criteria is. And if you want to see it without staff, then we're just taking the forty thousand away, we're taking the fifteen thousand away. And then that's what that would be left to. But we broke it down in this way so that you can see, if you wanted to pull all the pieces out, you want to pull out the, you know, the heated water, we could do that. It's just minus the eighty-five hundred dollars.
Well, it's just, it just, because my only issue with this is, is that when we made this, we went through a lot, a lot of discussion on this and we left off at a point of comparison. But now we're, we're coming back to a different comparison. There's more things added in to the, to this than when we were saying in the.
There's not over a hundred thousand in loss.
Well, I mean, if we take, if we take out the, the, again, it's just not, we're just looking at entirely different.
So what you want is it to be presented in the same way, wherever the eighty thousand dollars, whatever the amount was, the items that were on that, on that, is this what we're asking for us to present it in that same way?
That's the only way I can think of it coming back.
I don't have to go back and look at it to compare.
We did not have any support personnel, and that was a comment by several of the board members, that we needed to have somebody there. So we went back and added those people. You have to have lifeguards. I mean, if we're going to rent it out, we have to provide lifeguards.
But we talked about that being a wash, because if they're renting it.
There's revenue that's not being counted in the opposite, the other side of this. Because some of that, those lifeguards are covered by that facility use, which would make a difference in that operational cost, because that's assuming zero revenue at one thirty-six. But that's not really the case. There is going to be revenue through facility use. So we don't want to take that out of the bottom line there. And do we need all of those items? For example, we can, we can tweak what we want to do in the future, like if we're gonna, if we're going to, if we're gonna heat the pool or not. But at the same time, there is, if we're looking at it as only as a student-focused facility with facility use, that will offset some of that cost. And we may not need all of these line items in that scenario. There could be some incremental cost reductions in that new environment. And even on the side of we had, when we had talked about, we wouldn't necessarily need the gym anymore because we don't have a club. So therefore, whatever electrical cost that we have for there or pooling.
Yeah, this is, that's been factored in, in this estimate.
Show the gym.
Okay, so this does take that part out.
Yeah, and speaking with plain services, hey, what would it look like if we went from A seeing it three hundred and sixty-five days out of the year and they gave us a number of a reduction?
The only difference on here is the staff. And, and again, you know, for us, because we want to bring to you what you're asking for. So before, there are staff, there are board members who want to see staff included in there. Board members that don't want to see staff included in there. We broke it down in this way so that we could calculate it however we want to calculate it because the line items are there for the staff.
So Super Timor, can we just be there then? Can we just, okay, so can we just clarifying question? If, if we jump from here, this point, are we saying that there is still a forty thousand dollar expense to the district for running a membership program, even factoring in labor costs? Is, is right now the membership portion of it self-sustaining, that it is not costing this district any money? Or is there, is there was like a forty thousand dollar?
So let's.
Looks like there's like a forty thousand dollar gap.
If we can go real quick to slide.
Your rentals, your rentals just from synchrobells is a hundred and fourteen thousand.
No.
Yeah, I said.
Hundred and fourteen.
Twelve hundred, sorry, not twelve thousand.
Yes, a hundred and fourteen thousand.
No, twelve hundred.
Twelve hundred, sorry.
Not twelve thousand.
For a month, right, for a month, times twelve.
Yeah, no.
I, I know Josh, is the district.
Eleven hundred, twelve hundred a year or twelve hundred a month?
Okay, twelve hundred a month, times.
Is the district today having to spend?
So that's fourteen thousand, add that on there too.
To keep this, that's all that I need to know. Like, are we, we are having to spend money allotted for a school district, right? We are having to spend, so do we have that figure of?
There's a big difference. I understand what you're saying, Sally.
That's all, that's all I, that's all I want to figure out.
There's a big difference though between a forty thousand, right, shortfall and a hundred and forty thousand dollar shortfall.
I don't disagree, and yet I do, because I guess I would just, to me, I would ask that the board consider, like, with how tight things are. Where we're talking about whether to charge employees, you know, more premiums and is, is forty thousand for a, for a, if a, if a club came to us and sat right here and said, we want to use your facility, I'm sure.
It's not like that though, because you have to take the history of the whole property into account. It was gifted to us for exactly the purpose that is being used for us.
And that, and I think when we talk about each board member has their opinion, I think for me, it's just.
That's just fact.
Yeah, but that's, to me, that's more, to me, that's more, to me, that's.
Because it, it has served its purpose, but I think it's run its course. It's costing us way too much money. And that forty thou, it's more than forty thousand because there's, that, if we were to bring this down truly to a student-focused facility, we wouldn't need that extra.
Forty thousand dollars, so that'd be eighty thousand.
Right, and there's other things in there.
You guys are gonna need somebody to be in charge of that facility. You can't just, you can't just have nobody in charge of it.
But I don't even support it at costing us an incremental forty thousand. I mean, so that's why I just want to like meet where everybody is anyway. And my opinion is even costing us forty thousand, I was elected to get to a place of an A, a school district. You know, my background is instructional design, it's about objectives. Like, to me, this falls outside of our objectives, so I'm not even comfortable with forty thousand. And so if there is a plan, and I think that's what this, this all comes down to, is we, the vote came down to, okay, we're gonna start advertising, right? We're gonna try to, we're gonna give it a year. I think that, I'm trying to remember history, right?
It was a year.
We're gonna give it a year because what we're saying as a board is we're not comfortable, whether it's coming out of extended day, whether it's coming out of our general fund, wherever it's coming out of, we as a board are not comfortable with spending money allotted for the education of students to do this. And so we challenge Josh, like, find the revenue. And I think what, why we're here today is how are we trending? When we come to the end of that year, what are those objective measurements we are gonna use of whether we continue or stop?
So just, I just want to make sure one thing is clear. So FTC is earning revenue, whether it's extended day, whether it's adult ed, whether it's their CTE programs or whether it's the Bell Terrace Swim and Racquet Club. Those funds or the shortfall are not being paid out of the general fund. They're being paid out of the revenue that's being generated by FTC. So the idea that the money that we're getting from the state in the general fund to pay.
So FTC is funding this.
That's how it's always been.
Is paying for this, then that's not okay to me.
Well, if we take out, it says, we have forty in these numbers, but then when you take out the employee, if you take out heating the pool, we decided to do that, now we're at a ninety dollar difference. And there's other costs that might also be. And there's other costs that might also be, go down in here, um, if we weren't running it as a club. You know, I'm, you know, just like from electricity, you have, uh, the sauna, that, that, that pulls a lot of heat. I'm just saying that the gap is really, it's larger than forty and then it, so let's just, those two, the staff and, and the, and the heat, that brings us to ninety. Then we have the revenue, um, off, um, facility use. That opens up the, the, the gap, even, um, the, the, the loss, it reduce, helps reduce the loss and, and shows that, that there's a much bigger difference between a student-focused facility, facility use and membership club. Uh, it's likely well over a hundred thousand dollars. Uh, it looks like the, the, the difference changed because the cost to run the pool went up a little bit from, from last year, I get that. But ultimately, when we're looking at apples and apples where we left off, uh, it's, it's not necessarily a forty thousand dollar difference. It's more because some different items have been added in at the request of other board members for comparison, I understand. Uh, but if we go back to where we left off, those, those numbers weren't factored in. So all I'm saying is that at this moment, from what I see, from where I, where, where my view is of this facility, um, we're still at a hundred thousand dollars spread between a break even on, through memberships, right? Uh, if we keep the membership club. So I'll just leave that there.
So do we wanna keep going or do we wanna address this? Because I just feel like we're going in circles.
No, and, and thank you for saying that because I was gonna ask, like, what is next? You're asking for direction of when we come to that year mark, like, what do you need from us? Does this need to go on a business meeting? Because does it need to be a vote? Do we need to do consensus in this room?
If you would like for, if you would like for us to bring additional information back to you in a different way, we can do that. We will send it out to you. That's our plan. Our plan is to send it out to you, format it the way that it was formatted before, you will still have access to, to, um, this information.
That would be helpful.
We brought it to you because in the timeline, this was time for us to provide you with an update. So there is nothing else that you, that we will do unless there is some direction from, from the board.
What, what, until, until our timeframe, what is it, when is it, Josh?
So.
September or August?
If the board ever chose to sever those insurance agreements that we talked about, they auto-renew December thirty-first, you would need a board vote at the August, I believe it's August twentieth.
Yeah, I thought that's what we talked, so that's when it's gotta be.
Yeah, because letters would have to go out at the beginning of September to properly notify.
So if we were gonna close it down, it would have to be a hundred and twenty for one.
And I think that's what we said, we would come back.
So really, all we need to decide on is when it comes for a vote in August, what are, how, how will this board evaluate that decision?
Yeah, how will the board evaluate that?
Well, not only that, if your, if, if the vote is not going, if it's not going to be to continue it, right? Once we get the information that is similar to what, how it was presented before, the question becomes what does become of the facility? Because we're still gonna have to maintain it.
Have to go on loss, no matter what, every year we have to pay.
Yeah, and I, and I think that that's not up for, I mean, I think that's like, uh, we've all, I think we've all agreed that we're gonna keep the facility going because it's my, and that, that's just the other piece I was thinking about. We talked at length about the tens of thousands that are maybe coming down for like parking lot, pool maintenance. And it's my understanding, Dave, that like building a new pool, like as part of the Matanzas expansion, or like that is, like, it's, it's more cost-effective for us to keep this facility maintained than to build a whole new pool.
Tate just never wants to see another pool in his life.
Yeah, no, no, no. So, okay, but so I'm just saying, I think that's where we landed was I think we all agree based on Dave's, if nothing else, recommendation that for our, for, to be able to have both of our swim teams, we need to maintain this for Flagler School. So I don't think the facility is ever going to be shut down. It's just, we need to decide on the metrics.
If Palm Coast ever does build a pool, like they've been saying they were going to, then the realistic, maybe then we might wanna consider, it'll just be facilitroning for our swim teams, basically.
Well, I've read multiple emails about Palm Coast wanting to support the pool, but that is not the case.
Don't know what they're doing. I know. I know. But the other thing too is you can't, you can't take out the whole forty thousand because you gotta pay for custodial care. And that does come out of budget, but it's minimal. I don't think it's not forty thou, it's not twenty thousand.
Yeah, I mean, it's, I mean, there's, you know, having a full-time, that, that was the, always the biggest challenge, especially with the, with the minimum fifty dollars an hour, uh, staffing this, this club, um, to, to operate at, at, you know, to be able to check memberships, to collect fees and dues and everything like that. All that goes away when, when the, the club ends. And the cost is just gonna continue to, we just saw what happened here. From just not even a year, that the cost of, we've come to learn that our cost to even operate the pool has jumped significantly. Um, so, and we haven't, the, the projections don't, aren't showing that we really have moved the needle in revenue projections. So that means that this, this loss is only gonna continue, um, in, in the, in the next budget cycle. Um, on top of that, with capital improvements that, that may need to be done at the extent to facilitate a, a retail establishment, right?
So may I, may I ask a question? Um, when is the next scheduled time for an update to be provided to the board?
So we presented the timeline earlier, uh, last year, July sixteenth at the twenty twenty-four, uh, information workshop was where we were gonna come before and present our actual revenue and expenses, uh, and present any projected remaining expenses.
So what we, we're going to do is we're gonna send the information out to you, make sure it mirrors and looks just like it looked before.
Please include the revenue of the rental.
We will also include the revenue, um, in there. We will send that out to you in, in email. We will not bring this item back before you until July unless we are given specific direction from this board to bring it back sooner than July.
I, I just have one question. F T I, when they have, and I don't, this is a question for you, Josh, you'll know, when they have, um, instruction, like they have their swimmer, they bring in lifeguards to teach swim classes, okay?
That would be revenue.
Yeah, but that question is who pays, who, I don't think they pay.
So like swim lessons?
Yeah.
They pay, when we were partnered, when FTC partnered with, I think it's Aqua, Safe, uh, they had a grant. They signed up pep, uh, people for swim lessons and things like that. Those families pay FTC and FTC pays the staff.
Okay, so we don't, we don't have to eat that at all, so they don't, the.
But that should show in the revenue and expenses. Like, that should show in the revenue and expenses.
That is a, that is completely under FTC when they run their community.
It's not ours. I was just curious.
FTC, it does not do, does, is not charged a use of facility for the facility. They pay all of the costs, but like any of our other, um, facilities, they have access to the facility. They do not pay to utilize the pool. They, the pool is there, it is open, they pay for the instructor.
So they pay the instructors.
Right, but, okay.
They pay the instructors. All right, do we want to wait for the pool to, till July or?
Well, I have a question regarding the insurance. So just like a, so if we decided to, to close down the, the membership altogether, right? We no longer have a gym to, for, for them to participate in. There's gyms that, that go, that have insurance arrangements like this, but then they, they have, they, they close down. What happens with those insurance, uh, um, memberships, contracts that we have? Do they, do we have any consequence if we, if we decided earlier to, to, to terminate those because we don't know, we no longer are operating the gym?
So my understanding is we're operating on the potential of, you know, December thirty-first, that's when the insurance contracts are due to renew. You could vote and say, no, we wanna end them at that time, well within the contract structure of saying proper notice. Um, so as of right now, or as of January thirty-first, as far as total memberships that go into twenty twenty-five, we only have two. That, or, sorry, ten.
No, hi, his question is for insurance, if we decided to end, uh, enclose it today, how much notice do we have to keep it open from, for, for the insurance? Is there authority, sixty, ninety days?
Right, we penalize because a gym goes out of business, they just close their doors tomorrow and, and there's obviously.
Well, with insurance, I thought it was, in one of, one case, it's a hundred and twenty days.
But that's if you wanna stop accepting it, right? But if you want, if you no longer are offering the service, I mean, if you just, if we decide to close the gym.
That we're no longer just offering.
Right, because a gym, there's gyms that close down across the country every single day.
Like, are we in breach of contract or just it's no longer available?
Is there any, is there any consequence to us, uh, uh, because it was, my understanding was, that was only if you said, hey, I'm gonna still be a gym and I'm gonna no longer accept your insurance benefits, right, or, 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 uh.
My, my concern is though that we made a motion when we had this big discussion way back when, because I know Krista, you were involved in that motion, that we would let it go a year if it doesn't work and that is the format that we've already are following. This is the first update, there'll be another update in July, and in August, we will make the final call.
Just like the same timeline roughly, right? I think it's like at that meeting if it's decided. I, I don't know why you wouldn't just let it go another couple months, but if, I think, I think the timeline is the same anyway of when that annual review is up.
Yeah, that, and that would be, and then that would give him enough time or give the district enough time to notify all the insurance. It's just clean. It's clean that way, but we already have a motion that has established that.
Right, but we can always reevaluate things and if we're not, nothing's gonna change.
I'm just saying, we're looking at, we have the project, we, we have data now under, under this new model. And we're, we're, we're still not going, the projections just show us to continue to lose money, not to, not to break even. And so the, 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 if the, if the end result in August is going to be, we're going to lose money and we know that today, then why are we waiting until, until August?
Well, we have memberships. We have people that have purchased memberships that, that would create a refund. We'd have to go through the refund process if we decide to do that earlier.
I was gonna actually ask you about that, like, if someone bought an annual membership in July? And are they paying a hundred percent of that upfront? And then what does that look like of like refunding?
If, if someone purchases an annual membership to our facility, we offer, you can pay it all upfront or you can do it in quarterly installments. Um, so we, it's further broken down by, we might have fifty people on an annual, but twenty-five of them might be paying every three months.
But to Cheryl's point, we're then in the refund business.
Oh, yes.
The refund business.
Okay. Is that something that we do in other places?
How many members do we have?
Okay.
I guess the, the question is how many members do we have that pre, that, that paid in advance, right?
Well, and you have the gym, you gotta think of the gym too. I mean, there are people that are counting on that for that timeframe, they bought their membership for the gym.
That's what I'm saying, how many memberships do we, do we have of the people that paid in advance, not on a, on a month-to-month basis?
Sorry, I'm counting right. It, when I, sorry, when I run the report, it's extremely.
If we had to do a refund, we would provide a refund. We provide refunds to people on other things.
Part of the format that we provided, um, back in, with the eighty thousand is very similar to this chart right here. Um, so I'm not sure what else that we can provide but this. We can provide the revenue that you're asking about. But, I mean, I, we can pull out that slide and show you what that eighty thousand was, but it was broken down by the.
So that eighty thousand, we will do, it will only include what was in that eighty thousand, so if the.
If we didn't, okay.
Yes.
If we didn't during that estimate, if we didn't include that.
Apples for apples, because that, that's, in my mind, that's where I'm saying, okay, that's where we left off and that, that's, that's the difference that we're looking at, what changed since then is where, where I'm at. Um, so let's, let's bring that at our.
We will send that information to you. And we, we will not bring this back unless there is direction from the board to bring it back. We won't bring it back until July. You can bring, you can ask us to bring it back at a different time, but according to the timeline, it wouldn't come back until July.
Well, let's get the information and let's all, and then at our, at our next workshop, if somebody wants to, 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 to bring that to the, to the next agenda, they can, they can bring that forward. But let's have all the data so we can truly make sure that we all have the right information. Because it's, it's not on the agenda for tonight anyway, so it would, it would have to be a, a, a super majority or an adoption to changes of the agenda if we were to do it tonight, um, so.
Can I just ask for one more thing? And Dave, you can maybe just answer this right now. Um, if you guys will remember, Commissioner Pennington made a point to make public comment at our board meeting that it was her belief that Bell Terrace Swim Racket Club should be open for the community. She was pretty passionate about it. I'm curious with, with her opinion on that. Would the Board of County Commissioners be willing to increase their twenty-five thousand?
We just got a letter that we're talking about cutting the twenty-five.
We wanna stop paying the twenty-five.
And I only say that because Commissioner Pennington made a point to come and make a public comment during our school board meeting.
Since then, Sally, the, the increase, the possible increase to homestead, the twenty-five thousand dollars more is gonna put a great hit on the county funding.
And so it, so it sounds like the, it sounds like the Board of County Commissioners doesn't have the funding, even though they think this is a great idea, they don't have the funding to pay for it.
They don't, they, they may not have enough funding to pay if they, if that homestead.
So I'm sure they could understand if we then also didn't have the funding to pay for it, is really the point I'm making. With a, with a, with a commissioner coming to our meeting to make public comment.
She too is one board member.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Absolutely, just as I am.
We're all in the same boat.
Awesome, I'm with it. But, so it sounds like that's a, that's a no. We're not gonna get more money from there.
No, we're not.
I can't speak for them.
Are we potentially gonna be getting less money from there?
Yes, we're not going to get any money from them probably.
We should get our twenty-five this year, but I would assume that's gonna be the last time we see it.
So we have direction, we're gonna provide you with a slide that looks exactly like the one from the previous, uh, presentation. We're gonna include in there the rental revenue. That information will be sent to the board. The board will give us directive if you want it back before the scheduled July date.
Go ahead.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, um, now.
It's not yet public comment time.
I'll call, I'll call public comment at the end.
One more.
The reason I'm asking is I had to go visit my wife.
I'm sorry, we haven't.
I think we're almost finished.
We're almost done, one more, this should take too long.
Eight point zero two, proportionate share, delegation update, Mr. Winston, please.
Good afternoon, Chairman Fury, members of the board, Superintendent Moore. Um, compared to what you've been discussing lately, this should be short and sweet. Um, as you know, the board regularly reviews, uh, and approves proportionate share mitigation agreements. These agreements have been formatted over the years by a lot of legal input. And there's a specific section in the agreements that you've approved in the past, section twenty-two, that allows for the developers to assign these agreements if there's a change in partnerships or some sort of different mix of funding as to how they want to move forward. And, um, at the last board meeting, we had a discussion, uh, where we didn't really have a mechanism in place as a district to implement section twenty-two. And so we, uh, put together a delegation policy, it was reviewed by the board and you approved it. And Chairman Fury, you signed that delegation policy. And once we got that mechanism in place, uh, as we predicted, there were two agreements that were standing there waiting in line to take advantage of that. Uh, one was the Evolve Apartments Complex, it's two hundred and fifty-six apartment development in Palm Coast. And the second one was the Ponce Preserve Subdivision, seventy-four single-family homes. Um, the status on these two, um, you asked us to come back and report, uh, to you periodically in the spirit of transparency. And, uh, the status is that the one for the Evolve actually had all of the, uh, legal notices done uh, for the assignment with the, um, uh, the attesting, attesting, the clerk attesting. Well, the second one didn't. So again, as we're developing this new mechanism, we're trying to standardize the form. And that form has gone back now to get it done for the second one, for Ponce Preserve. They're in the middle of the closing, that document is, um, being drafted as we speak. It's, it'll be back to me any day now. And so, uh, just in the spirit of coming forward and sharing what has been happening on that since you approved the delegation policy, uh, I'm happy to report that we are well on our way to tying a bow on this.
Great, thank you, Mr. Winston. I just, uh, so this was basically just, this is some procedural items that are need to be cleaned up here. But, uh, ultimately, nothing changes in the agreement other than the owner of the properties, the assignment or transfer in the name of ownership. But everything carries forward to the new owner that, when it comes to.
Absolutely, absolutely, Chairman. And again, why this is so, are we being very particular on this and the attesting and all of that is because these proportionate share agreements run with the land. And so when you have changes in partners and players and things like that, everybody has to agree. And it, and I just kinda put my foot down, I said, look, if, if the proportionate share agreement has to be recorded in the, the county records, why doesn't the amendment also have to be recorded? And so it was just clearing up that procedural, uh, aspect and getting it all attested that's, that's caused one delay, but everything else is good.
Okay, any other questions? All right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, um, so now we're just gonna move on to old business, any old business?
Blessings.
Blessings.
Me.
Hearing that, I'll move forward to new business. Uh, seeing done, I will move on to public comments. Do we have anyone sign up for public comment?
Yes, Doug, listen.
Okay. Okay. Please come on up.
There you go.
Sector two-one, thank you for your time. Uh, this is reference to Belt Air, uh, item on the gym. Uh, we do agree with the, uh, assessment of the point of indifference being the one hundred and thirty-six thousand, one hundred dollars. When I say me, I'm talking to Belt Air Advisory Committee, we think that's an excellent number. We do want to point out that we feel that very strongly, that you need to include the seventy-five thousand to eighty thousand dollars a year in revenue that is produced by Belt Air and has been produced every year for the last five years. Uh, if you include that in there, and you include the hundred and seventy thousand dollar loss that you include back in, the seventy-five thousand dollars, we're no longer producing a forty thousand dollar a year cost to the taxpayers, but we're actually producing a thirty-five thousand dollar positive towards the taxpayers. In other words, the taxpayers are no longer paying thirty-five thousand dollars that they would have to pay because that seventy-five thousand dollars is making a difference. We feel, you very strongly feel you have to put that money in because not putting it in would be the equivalent of Disney, only charging and tick-tock, charging, including the heads they bring in every day, not including the things such as, you know, souvenirs and earmuffs and the food they service to decide whether or not they have a profit. So that number has to be included in that evaluation. Also, we very, 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 very much like to have the administration and to do and follow the protocols that the City of Palm Coast has asked, and doing a formal request even now in February for additional funding to help with Belt Air. We have contacted the city, and they said if the process and procedures was followed, there is a very good probability that even this year before the end of June, they could probably donate twenty-five thousand dollars towards the operation of Belt Air. But the process has to be followed, it has to be done in writing, there is a process for it, they do have the ability to get it done, and, but, they have never been done in writing, it has never been sent it to them in writing, it's never been asked in writing, and never been taken care of in writing. And it has to be done within the next couple of weeks because this is March, or what, uh, very shortly in March is when the time for special assessments is allowed. Finally, we'd also like to, not finally, but we'd also like to stress to make sure that the point-of-sale process gets implemented over there. Currently, there's only one person, two people that can take payments Monday through Friday, and they have to be on-site to do that, and if they are, may have a meeting, if they're taking swimming lessons, they can't do that. So nobody can take money to buy memberships or do anything whatsoever until those people are there. The pro, the point-of-sale process was implemented but was never finalized. So we cannot purchase or pay for our memberships online or take care of the things that we want to do, increase more profits, make more general, more funds. And that would help us out greatly if you would do that.